We have a live mic. There we go. We do now. Good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the Morro Bay City Council, Thursday, January 24, 2019. We are located at the Community Center Multipurpose Room. It is 4:00 PM. Notice that all members of council are here. We do have a quorum, so I do want to call the meeting to order. And Councilmember Davis, would you lead us in the flag salute, sir?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible) Yes, I've got that in my notes. Thank you, sir. Good afternoon again. Thank you. This is a special meeting for consideration of our advisory council appointments as well as our planning commission. I want to thank each and every one of you that applied for our special bodies as well as our planning commission. It's a great honor to serve the city as an elected official but also as an appointed official, and we appreciate your willingness to do that. This afternoon, we'll start with public comment. This will be general public comment for any items on the agenda or not on the agenda. As we go to each commission and/or body, we're not going to take public comment again, so if you do have public comment, now would be the time to come forward. The podium is ready, and so looking for any general public comment. And seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will invite our planning commission applicants to come forward. Planning commission applicants, and we have special chairs for you over here, much nicer than the vets hall, I guarantee. That's one improvement. One note for council before you, you have varied color, what I'll call ballots. We'll ask you at the end of the public question time to make a decision via ballot. We will turn those into our clerk, and our clerk will read the results of our appointed commissioners and/or advisory body folks. One note, Mr. Usher, Philip Usher withdrew today, so if you could make that note on your sheet, Mr. Usher has withdrawn. And so we welcome those of you that are interested in the planning commission. It's great to have you here. First off, we'd like to, again, thank you for applying, and ask that in about a minute, if you would just introduce yourself and give us a brief statement as to qualifications and why you feel you would make a good planning commissioner. And then we will go to council. Each council member will be able to ask one question, and the question will be for the complete panel. So the question will be stated, and then we'll start with an individual, and then I'll try to move to the next one so that everybody has a chance to possibly be varied and not be put on the spot as being first with that. And so with that, if I could start right in the middle with Ms. Stewart, if you would... Yeah, I wouldn't want to start in the end, you know? That's normal. Yeah, darn. Just one minute of introduction, why you're interested in the planning commission, your background, and it's great to have you here. Thanks for coming.
Thanks for putting me first.[272.33][272.33](laughing) Susan Stewart, I have owned a small business in downtown Morro Bay for about 13 years. I've lived in Morro Bay for 31 years. I have just gotten off the General Plan Advisory Committee, so have gone through reviewing and redoing our general plan and local coastal plan as well as our zoning code update. And I think bringing that voice of a retail store to the board is important. I think bringing the voice of somebody who has lived in town all these years and is still renting a house is important as we look at various housing issues. I raised my kids here, so in terms of being a family person, and very much admire and appreciate our board, but it's very male. So I'm really pleased to see some other women here and women's voices and ideas that hopefully will contribute. I have also, I've got a degree in cultural anthropology and have done work in construction as an archaeologist and also as a house painter. So I've kind of seen building industries and how codes and building issues affect other kinds of businesses, too. So I think I have a different perspective I could bring to the commission.
Great. Appreciate that very much. Why don't we go to Mr. Richard Glenn Turner?
Hi, Glenn Turner. I've been in Morro Bay now eight years, retired from Bakersfield. My wife and I moved here. I'm a retired general building contractor, BA from Fresno, been, like a lot of people in the valley, coming to Morro Bay my entire life and finally got to retire here. Spent the first few years getting my home remodeled and getting settled down, and now just decided that I have the time to volunteer, and I've had quite a bit of committee experience on a smaller scale in our community in Bakersfield, a 500-home community, serving on the various committees and the board of directors, and so I kind of know how that part of it operates. And I've just decided I need to volunteer if I can.
Great. Welcome. And Alexis Vincent, go to you next.
Hello. I'm Alexis.
There's a button there to push, and the red light will go on on the front. The white button? There you go. You have to get pretty close to that. Yes, you can pull it to you.
Sorry, a little nervous.
No worries.
Hello, my name is Alexis Vincent. I just opened a day spa on the Embarcadero a couple months ago. I've moved to this beautiful city about five years ago. I'm brand-new to all of this, and I feel crazy for doing this.[461.43][461.43](laughing) But I feel that there's a lot of younger people coming into the community. We really want to revitalize. I've been working with hotels, and I'm a massage therapist esthetician, so I've been working in a lot of other places like Avala and Pismo Beach where they've really revitalized, you know, and brought a lot of money back into their city. So I want to help us do that. I want us to make us affordable so that people of my age group can buy here, so that we can raise our children here, and that we can come in and bring in amazing new things for the families to do when they come here. And I'm not as qualified as them. I have a little bit of college education, mostly trade schools. I've done pretty much every job that you can imagine. I was a merchant marine for about six years, so I've done that. I've worked overseas, and I'm from San Diego, and I don't want to go back there.[524.16][524.16](laughing) I love it here. It's amazing, and I just want to be a part and build and put roots down. I'm getting married next, this year, actually. No, it's this year. So my fiance is from here, and so just excited about, you know, building the future here.
Well, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you.
And again, just as a reminder, you'll need to pull that mic really close to your mouth. Sorry about that, but it's hard for the public to hear on television. You are on television, by the way, folks.
Oh.
Yeah. So let's go to Jerry Lur. Jerry, welcome.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I've had the honor of serving on the planning commission on and off for probably the last 15 years, and presently, I'm acting as chair up until this point. We've dealt with quite a few touchy issues, and I hope we've been able to wiggle through the morass of them to come to some decent decisions. One of the things I've noticed since being on the commission, it's a learning experience also. And so I go in with my background and am always amazed at the very points of view, and being open to those, I think, is real important for anybody that sits on the planning commission. My background is, my dad was a commercial fisherman. I fished commercially for a while. I've come up through the trades in the building industry and have, you know, have worked in almost all the trades. I came up here to go to Cal Poly in '74 in the architecture program, and have been here pretty much ever since. And, you know, I was able to, am able to donate some of my time, you know, to volunteer and to hopefully make this city, you know, a better community as we go. I did drop off a packet for you here. This was some, when we were looking at trying to do some downtown design guidelines, this was a packet that I put together, working with several planners from different cities, taking the San Luis Obispo downtown design guidelines as a format and then kind of adapting them to what we could use here in Morro Bay. And I think this would be a good format to start the discussion. And we are a unique community, and there are several issues that would need to be addressed that are unique to Morro Bay. So I would like to continue on the work, and if not, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to do what we've done.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate that very much. And last but not least, Ms. Melanie Walker. Welcome, Melanie. Good to have you.
Hello. Yeah, my name's Malaney Walker.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Everyone does it, but it's Malaney Walker. I'm a retired special education teacher from Los Angeles. My husband and I have owned a home here since '98, and then about two years ago, we were able to actually locate up here. He got a different position, and I was able to retire from LAUSD. My background in education outside of the classroom has included working at the state, county, and city levels. Special education is grossly underrepresented in the state, and so I've had to learn through a lot of really talented people how to achieve things for children that normally are overlooked. So coming to this community, being a small community, I feel like I can look at it from that perspective. I've learned a lot about how state, city, county works, and I know how to work with people according to what regulations are. I have a daughter who is a teenager, and I want her to feel excited about living here, coming from the large city. It's quite a difference for her, and she's gradually coming around, but I think having a perspective from a youthful standpoint like that is very important and needs to be considered in how Morro Bay decides to plan and go forward. As far as buildings go, my husband and I have built two homes from scratch, and I've been an integral part of that. When we've worked with our schools, I've had to work with a lot of regulations and rules at different levels to be in compliance, everything from asbestos removal to actually building on to school buildings. So that's my background, and thank you for listening to me.
Great. Thank you all, and again, welcome. We appreciate you being here. And to start with council questions, start with one council member that'll ask one question. I'll indicate who I'd like to go first. Asking that you think about limiting your answer to one minute if possible. We have a rather long meeting, but if you go over a little bit, that's fine, but we're looking for one-minute answers, maybe to some complex questions. Nonetheless, I'm going to ask Mr. Lur if you'll start, and I'll start with Councilmember Addis, if you would begin off our questions, please.
Well, first of all, thanks to all of you for being here. We really appreciate your time this afternoon. My first, my question is, what do you see as the intersection between housing and the health of the community? And what do you think we can do better to promote both?
Okay, very interesting question. Thank you. At the micro level, the housing, the health of housing has really improved a lot with the green technologies that are available. You know, I've been, I've pushed that. I've done primarily my design work on residential and also on the commercial buildings has been sustainable, green, you know, renewable energy sources for the individual homes. And I think the interior quality is incredibly important for individual health. On a macro level, I think moving the community to lower greenhouse gas emissions, lower... Luckily, we have very few point source emissions now. We used to have when we had the tankers out there and such, but those are gone, so we don't have those. So I think we actually have a very healthful community and very healthful environment here. Keeping recreation facilities open and available and having, in new development and the new general plan, implementing that, the fact of having as much cycling, having as much access to open space, the beaches, using the, also using the greatest resource we have here, which is our harbor and our bay, and having more access to that, such as on our dead-end streets in our Purions, making sure any developments there have water level access to them, so you could kayak off from them. And then also, then one of the best improvements that I've seen that's happened to this community has been the harbor walk, the boardwalk. You know, that encourages active participation and interaction with the bay, having that lateral access, free and open throughout the harbor front, preferably from the rock to the state park. And then also, another thing that I would like to see promoted more is bike sharing programs. So people that travel here, you know, will have a place at their hotels, at the campgrounds, you know, and at localized points in the city be able to pick up a bike, ride it, you know, drop it off, and then pick up another bike, ride it back. And I think that would be a huge benefit to the community, and would cut down on vehicle, you know, drive times, and would also give the people a sense of connection with what we have here. And these can also be not cost programs, but also could be money, you know, self-sustaining programs for the city, so we don't have that, you know, a draw. It doesn't have to be an outlay. It just needs, we just need to be able to facilitate the organization of that. So I think I've probably run over my minute, but I could go on for longer.
That's right. Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Turner, sir? End the question one more time?
What do you see as the intersection between housing and the health of the community, and what would you do to promote both?
Well, of course, in every community, availability and affordability is critical. If we want to invite people to come to Morro Bay, there has to be, and work here, they certainly have to be able to afford to work here. And sometimes I wonder how a lot of folks do that with the cost. So I think searching for ways to make and maybe provide some type of housing for, and homes for lower-income folks is critical. I think that's probably the main thing I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Stewart, thank you.
So one of the things that immediately occurred to me was actually a young student from Cal Poly. I had come into the store and tell me about work that she was doing, and actually had been in Washington, DC, working on, about walkability in communities, and how, you know, we look at that and think, okay, there's a health benefit to walking and being active. But she also described that when you have a walkable community, you have neighbors who know each other, they're familiar with each other, it's also a safer community. People are aware of when somebody maybe isn't coming out of their home for a while and checking on them. So making easier, walkable communities, I think, and it is that balance that Jerry's talked about with, we may need better lighting on our streets to be able to do that in the evenings. We may need to consider sidewalks for safety. But I think bike paths, too, you know, all of that can bring together sort of that better sense of community, having front porches that where people sit out and watch that sunset and greet their neighbors. I think it creates healthier living because of that sense of community that it creates. I think we're also fortunate to have several farmers' markets, so we're kind of offering healthy food options and making that an event as well as a place to shop. And I like the idea of allowing the kind of development where you have resources for folks so that they could walk to a corner store and get some groceries, or walk to a corner pharmacy and get what they might need. So allowing a little more of a blended feel in our zoning. And then one, totally agree with the affordable housing. I think that's a huge issue here. And I have a mom in Pennsylvania who's fortunate enough to live in an amazing assisted-living community. It's not a facility, it's a community. They have their own homes, and I would love to see us look at something like that since we do have an aging population that is more, it's allowing people their autonomy and independence for as long as possible. So I would like to see more things like that, whether we can allow some kind of development to come in, or we build it into the communities that we already have.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
It's hard to add on with all those really good ideas. My thought additionally would be to try to come up with some way of uniting the youth with the older population here. We have some really incredible younger kids here who, if their energy and outlook can somehow be incorporated into people with more experience, I think it would just invigorate this community tremendously. I'd like to see parts of Morro Bay become more connected, say like northern, the northern part of town with the stuff along the Embarcadero. It would be a great, in terms of looking at traffic flow, in terms of like the bike idea, to start connecting people and saying, hey, there's events going on over here. Let's figure out ways of getting you down and involved in it, so that it's a community where all sides know what's going on.
Great. Thank you very much. And Ms. Vincent?
So I have several ideas.
Again, you'll have to hold that just pretty close to, you can just pull it right up to you there. There you go.
Is that better?
Thank you.
I have several ideas on this. One of them being bringing in revenue to the city would be during the summertime, having summer camps, so that people who are coming here for a week or a weekend, their children are occupied so that they can relax and enjoy all of the wonderful things in Morro Bay. Also, another thing would be a tiny city for a transient population. So instead of having a hand out, they're getting a hand up. So as long as they follow specific guidelines, they're doing the learning of trade, they're getting off of drugs, they're having a home, a place to shower, things like that, then we're helping them and it's bringing us back to a community, which I feel like we're missing in the city of Morro Bay. Being down on the Embarcadero, there is definitely a separation between the businesses everywhere else and then the Embarcadero. So maybe doing a restaurant week where all of the restaurants get together and they open their doors, or maybe having an open house for all of the businesses and having live music and carnivals or something, so that we can enhance and say welcome to our beautiful city and bring people from all over the world to enjoy. I also have different ideas on lots of different things with this, but one of the main things is somebody who's coming in and who's renting here, there's nowhere to rent, and if you do rent, everything's $1,800, something like that. I've noticed that there is a lot of Airbnbs that are not sanctioned or vacation rentals. We're losing our city. We're losing our population. Young couples, they, there's nowhere for us to stay, and we can't afford $2,000, $3,000 a month to stay in a shack. So I feel like we need to work on making it a more affordable housing area by maybe eliminating so much vacation rentals and making it more of a, oh, well, I got to get in to go to Morro Bay. You know, I got this beautiful house. They only have so many houses per year, instead of everybody doing it, and it's like a free-for-all. So things like that is kind of how I would go along with that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll go ahead with Councilmember Davis, and I think we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Turner this time. And again, we're looking for about one minute. I know it's hard when you're in front. We've got several groups to go and a lot to say, but that's fine. So Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, and thank you for your thoughtful answers so far. So my question is, in five years, what do you think parking management will look like in Morro Bay?
Boy, parking management. All right, by parking, you mean automobile parking, I'm assuming?
Yes, thank you.
Well, I don't, with the city laid out the way it is, the streets are relatively narrow. I can't imagine doing any dramatic changes in parking to accommodate more cars. Maybe parking areas, but as far as parking on the street, from what I see, I don't see a way to get too many more cars on the street, the way the parking is set up now.
Great, thank you. Ms. Stewart?
So my first reaction was it's going to be exactly the same as it is now, but we don't want to, we don't want to be like that. I would hope that, so some of this, and you're right about, you know, in the residential areas, there's issues with street parking. I'm hoping in five years, people are realizing they don't need to have three cars for two people. So there maybe will just be fewer cars and more use of some of the transportation things that are available out there. In the business district, I would hope that we are looking at utilizing some of the lots that are empty and unused for anything else to be parking lots, whether it's paid parking or not. I see opportunities for us. I think when the Bank of America building sells, for example, in the downtown area, if they take that parking lot away, it's going to be a bigger problem. I do know that we have plans for striping with diagonal parking downtown, which I think will help. On the waterfront, I think there have been some efforts to gain spaces with purchasing lots, but then we also seem to be losing them as development happens, too. So in five years, I'm hoping we see an even greater parking problem because we have so many people who want to be visiting here, but that hopefully we have some solution. I'm not sure I see a parking garage as a solution. I just, those would have to go so tall or so deep that it doesn't seem to fit the Morro Bay style. So I would rather see us use some of the multitude of empty lots that are around, and then again, you know, whether we have the dileride or the trolley, you know, to shuffle people around who can't do the walking part.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Walker?
In terms of businesses, I'd like to see during events, more people directing traffic down in the business area. I'd like to see additional shuttles available that people are aware of. When wonderful events like the sailing ships that came into the harbor, the throngs of people that came, the parking was chaotic. And I think it can be addressed simply with people who are directing where there's open places currently to park, and putting in maybe one or two additional shuttles that are clearly marked for transporting people. In terms of the home situation... In terms of the home situation, we're facing the same problem. Where do we put our cars? If transportation is more readily available to run down to the store, yes, you don't need the extra car. And I think going in that direction is really the direction we should be looking at.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Vincent?
So with the parking, I believed that as she did with the, you put up a parking lot in paradise, you know? There's a couple of empty lots that have been sitting here as long as I've lived here and they're not really being used for anything. So it could be paid parking, but I was also thinking for large events, we could work with Cuesta and say, hey, you've guys got all this parking. How about we make a deal, we give you a portion of the proceeds on however you want to use it, donations, whatever, and then have people shuttled in so that there's not a lot of cars here in the city of Morro Bay. It's out there and we can regulate it. Also with the parking for people who work in the city of Morro Bay, that we have a designated area and that we can get dropped off so that tourists, they have, they can park in front of our shops or they can park anywhere they want and we are off designated area. Our cars are being watched by the police, you know, neighborhood watch, anything like that. And that's all I got.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lur?
Okay, this is basically can be broken down into residential, commercial and visitor serving. You know, I think, and we're going to have coming up, we're going to have a big problem in the residential areas and partially because, well, mostly because the new ADU requirements and state laws are not, are allowing people to convert their garages into ADUs and not required to supply covered parking to replace the parking that's lost. So the biggest battles we've, that I've seen on the Planning Commission is within neighborhoods and within neighbors because of parking. Parking in front of other people's driveways, parking in front of other people's houses, parking in front of their mailboxes so they don't get the mail. So that's a big part of the community strife is the parking and we're really restricted because of the state law. So I don't have an answer for that. I hope somebody does. For, you know, for the downtown and Embarcadero, the business district, I think we, I'm in favor of attempting to give the streets back to the pedestrians, you know, such as closing down sections of the Embarcadero, creating a ring route and then also restriping and reapportioning the downtown area. So you have, once again, you have a circuit route with a couplet that has access on Pacific and I think it's on Moro Boulevard. And that way you then have cross traffic. You can then diagonal stripe, you can create a pedestrian, more of a pedestrian route and you can service those businesses with cross, from the cross streets. Also, in the downtown area, one of the biggest parking problems we have is with employee parking. The only way to really solve that is to, is to create a paid parking system. Using the funds from that paid parking, you can then, you can then use the funding, the funds that are acquired from that to redevelop the downtown and the Embarcadero. That's what, that's how San Luis Obispo redeveloped its business district. That's how Pasadena redeveloped its business district. There's a, there's a big fallacy that if you have paid parking, people won't come. But what it does is you, you create high intensity zones that are more expensive. We have plenty of parking at the Triangle Lot. We have plenty of parking at, lost the name of the little park where the boat launch is. We also have plenty of parking out at the Rock. So with paid parking in the center, that will push the employees out to those areas and then with, with electric shuttles back and forth, we'll supply, we'll be able to bring them back into the community. And, you know, doesn't hurt to walk.
Great, thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right, let's go to Marlis.
Thank you.
Councilmember McPherson, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll start with Susan. Thanks, Susan.
And welcome, everybody. It's great to see so many people applying for advisory boards. This has got to be a record number. And I just want to preface my question by saying that this is the hardest job that the city council has because when you get so many qualified candidates and you have to pick only one or two from five, some of you aren't going to make it. So I just want to say, don't feel bad, try again, don't, it really is difficult. So now, my question. I think it was Ms. Vincent who mentioned vacation rentals. So that's a huge issue in our community. So what would your approach be to crafting a vacation rental ordinance for Morro Bay?
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, Susan. Yes, it is your turn. You wanted to be skipped on that one, right?
One minute. Okay, it's done. Didn't you guys work on that already?
We're not sure what to do though.
Pass the buck back to you. I think it is a touchy situation and you do certainly need input from all the parties that we have been hearing from. I agree that it's changing our neighborhoods, the proliferation of the vacation rentals and I think the unlicensed ones make it even harder for the licensed ones because you do see more problems with that. I would definitely fall on the side of limiting the number. I know when we were looking at this issue in the General Plan Advisory Committee and looking at different overlays and, you know, if you kept certain number of feet in between each one, it actually did come out to about 250, I think, you know, plus or minus, which seemed like a reasonable thing. I do know that we were also dealing with Coastal Commission requirements that we make that housing available to visitors as a beach access issue. So it kind of muddied the waters a little bit, but I think given that affordable housing is a huge issue for the entire state, my guess would be that we could work with them to come up with a reasonable plan. I do also like the idea of the secondary units possibly, you know, with, with the person in the front unit living there, a secondary unit being used as a short-term vacation rental to supplement, you know, the income or the ability of that person in the main house to pay their mortgage. Those kinds of things do make sense to me, so.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Truthfully, this is an area that I'd have to get more information on. I do believe having monitored vacation rentals is really, really important to keeping the integrity of neighborhoods. And I'd like to know how many people in Morro Bay taking a survey of who's doing it officially actually are doing it. So there's a lot of information I would need to gather first and opinions from people in order to really come to a clear concept of how we should be going forward with it. And without that, it's kind of hard. I would just be extrapolating on different ideas, but I'd really need the facts in order to try to come to a conclusion.
Thank you. And Ms. Vincent?
So I know that there's about 250 and there's, I think that you guys should tighten up the rules and the regulations for having them. Yes, you need to be a resident here more than half of the year for you to have a vacation rental. You should be paying taxes by having this. We're not benefiting, the city is not benefiting from you renting out your home. I understand it's helping you pay your mortgage, but that is a bigger issue, the fact that we need to bring more jobs to Morro Bay with higher salaries so that we can afford to live here or, you know, figure out affordable housing. I do understand the allure of, hey, you know, we'll just go maybe once every six months or something. It's dad's house, you know, he passed it on along, but I live in LA. There's a lot of people. I do mobile massage. I, you know, I've been massaging in this area for five years, working in the spa industry. The majority of homes, even though they're family owned, are vacation rentals and it doesn't do anything for us if we're not being stricter about the rules and having people pay to have that, you know? It's, yes, it's a wonderful luxury to have a house or two homes or three homes, but what about people who can't even afford one home that live here? So it's just kind of this ongoing thing where, well, what are you going to do to solve that? I don't think that vacation homes should be taken away because I think they're beautiful and they add to the city. But there's also, I believe you should have rules and regulations and as a business owner, which it is a business, you should be held to the same standards as people who are running a business here.
Thank you. Mr. Lur?
Okay, we get into the issues here of property rights. We get into the issues of taking of people's homes and then businesses also. There's a lot of court cases coming down right now, especially from New York where they've been active and especially in San Francisco where they've been actively trying to monitor these. For Morro Bay, I think we've kind of taken a step back and let, let the dust settle a little bit to see where some of these court cases land and I think that's, that's appropriate. Where I would like to see it is these, the vacation rentals have a lot of impact in the community. You know, they're basically, they're basically hotels in the residential area. They are taking up housing units that could be rented out for a longer term. But on the other side, if they're, if they're appropriately monitored, they're a revenue source for the city on the TOT tax. I think owner occupied vacation rentals are more of a benefit to the city than non-owner occupied. So there's, there would be somebody there that it would be their home, they would be there to monitor it. A lot of the problems I've seen that's happened is that there's nobody there to call, there's nobody there to monitor these, these programs. And, you know, I would have a three strikes and you're outlaw, you know? And then also actively monitoring who is renting and who is renting illegally. I know of several in the, in my own community that are illegal rentals. They are not sanctioned by the city. The other, you know, so those are the important, I think those are the important things. I think our vacation rental standards that we were working on, I think they're flawed in a couple, couple aspects. I don't think that it should be on a revolving account, that if you, if you are a member in good standing that is actively following the rules, I don't think your vacation rental license should be taken away from you just because you had a two-year stint at it. I think those are the people we want to encourage to do that. So I think, you know, having people, also I think having people have the option of either renting out the small, you know, if you have an ADU on your property, renting out the smaller unit or renting out the bigger unit, but have it be occupied in one of the two, I think is the best, best option. I could go on.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Well, with everything that's been said, I agree that the vacation rentals are important to the city. Those folks come here and they visit and they spend money and we need those, but we need some oversight. I know in my area, one issue that bothers me personally is the amount of cars that come when the people come to visit, there's, they come to a house and there's no parking and there may be four cars that come with this group and I know they're here having fun, but it just seems like we need to have a little bit more oversight on and management on, on these units, how they can be used, how many cars people can bring to them. As far as the number of people, I guess if they're indoors, I don't know, but, but the cars are definitely an issue for me.
Thank you. And thank you for those answers. And Ms. Walker, we're going to start with you and Councilmember Heller, you're up, sir.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate the thank yous for all of you applying for these positions and if you don't get selected, there's plenty of volunteer opportunities and other great things you can do for the city. And I'm really impressed by your responses to the questions and your qualifications and I want to thank you all for, for applying for this. You probably know that small town character is a big deal here in Morro Bay. It's something that the vast majority of the population wants to preserve. On the other hand, we have large houses being built on small lots and so there's kind of a continual conflict between what I call McMansion-ization, which drove me out of Southern California, to maintaining the small town character. So if you're selected to the Planning Commission, how would you balance the property rights of the McMansion-ization trend versus maintaining the small town quality?
I need to look at what the regulations are statewide, county-wise and in terms of square footage, what's currently available and what municipalities have in terms of power to regulate that. So I would need you to be boned up on the background of that first. It's really within the city of Morro Bay's desire to try to keep the small town look. And so limiting the amount of space on the McMansion would be something I would personally like to see happen. But in order to make that happen, we need to look at all the regulations and say, is there something that we can do to start regulating that in the direction that the community wants to go in?
Great, thank you. And we'll just go down the line to Ms. Vincent. Pull that nice and close.
Okay. So I'm not a fan of the McMansions myself. I live in a very, I live in a studio actually and I love it. I am surrounded by forest and wildlife and it is incredible and I wouldn't change it. I think that people who are coming in from outside areas, they don't really, they come here and they don't really understand the beauty of living in that area, but a lot of them do, like myself and you, sir. I do think that when they come to you and they ask for, you know, permission to build, ask them, what are you envisioning? This is our town, we want you to be a part of it. How can we help you help us, you know, as a community so that everybody's on the same page? And a little bit of kindness goes a long way. So if you have an idea, an image, a quaint town and just be like, look, this is the style of homes that we'd like, we want cabins or this or that. Do you require five bedrooms? How many children do you have? You know, just go down the list. And I don't know if you can do that or not, but it just seems like there's, there should be a way to protect the wildlife and the coastal pines here, you can't tear those down. You really have to research and have them understand what part of the property that they're owning. They can't tear this tree down. They can't, they can't take this bush out because of this. Or if you're going to add on to your home or add on to this, you have to understand that you're taking away from the wildlife, you're creating noise, you're, you're endangering certain creatures, things like that.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lur?
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've dealt with this problem before and continuously since I moved here in '74. So you, you have to balance property rights and individual rights against community responsibility. And I think that is an extremely tough balance to get. I see a problem with this community, you know, in a blanket reaction to larger projects. You know, large homes are not in, you know, bad per se. They're bad in bad situations. What we need, we need a full mix of, of homes for the community and for potential people moving in and the people that are here to be able to find a five-bedroom home if that's what they require, to be able to find a 320, I lived in a 400 square foot house here for a while, you know? They also, so we should be able to have smaller homes, micro homes, we should be able to have large homes. They need to be in their appropriate settings. We've tried to address this and I think it's worked extremely well so far in developing the residential guidelines. This, this gives, this was a format that we, we approached that it gives people coming in, they come to the front counter at the planning, planning department, there's a booklet that's given to them, that they have the guidelines, that they know what the community expects. We can, you know, these need to be reviewed continuously, you know, on a, probably We can, you know, these need to be reviewed continuously, you know, on probably a three-year, two-year, three-year basis. We've already done one preliminary review and we found that it was working pretty well. So that is, you know, that solves several problems. As a builder and, you know, as a developer, you're, you're able to, to address, to, to come to the planning department and say, okay, this is what the community expects. You're able to come therefore fulfill those expectations without having to go roundabout and costing everybody money, which drives the cost of housing up. If you restrict housing to saying that you can only, you know, far as inappropriate, you know, has been pushed around, I think it's a bad, I think it's a bad format because it's going to drive the cost up. For, you know, this also gets back into affordable housing. If you don't allow big housing, you also cause smaller housings to be more expensive. So, so it's a real touchy thing, and I think the design guidelines are a very good first attempt at it, and they need to be reviewed and constantly updated. And once, once again, these are, you could go on and on about these problems.
Thank you. And Ms. Turner.
Well, I agree with everything you said. Having just gone through a construction project, there is already a large amount of oversight being done to ensure that whatever your project is, that it fits into the neighborhood. I mean, and it goes into a lot of detail and, and rightly so. I don't think we should step on a person's property rights who wants to build a home as long as they build it within the guidelines set down by the city and whatever rules and regulations they have to follow. I, I, I don't agree with, with taking away anybody's right to build a larger house. I, I don't see that it hurts the community in any way.
Thank you. And Ms. Stewart.
I was fortunate to be able to go to the Planning Academy. City paid for a couple of us to do that, thank you very much. And we had a contractor builder giving a presentation and talking about building spec houses and that, when you think about it, for a contractor to build a huge fancy house that he can get a whole, or she can get a whole lot more money for, gives them a better return on investment. But what that person said was that if you could go through the process quickly and easily and just dot all those i's and cross the t's, get your spec house done within a year, it was affordable to make smaller affordable housing. So I think, again, if we, if we have our, our codes and, and we stick to it and we know what those regulations are supposed to look like, and you offer that to somebody, hey, if you're going to be building a house that's only covering this much of the lot, allowing you to have a yard for your kids or to grow your veggies or whatever, you can get that through our offices exponentially faster. So I would see doing that kind of partnership relationship, creating those kinds of codes so that it's, it makes more sense, people are going to want to build that smaller home. And, and it sort of gets back to, to Ms. Addis's question, if, if you're making those, that healthier, better, walkable community with the front porches and the yards and the parks, people don't need that big house because they're going to be outside, they're going to be interacting with each other, so.
Great, thank you. Last question, finally. Realizing that there is a need for some economic development, maybe significant economic development in the community, both in the downtown and on the Embarcadero, how do you feel about height variance issues with regard to the possibility of infringing on the view shed of Moral Bay versus balancing that against potential positive economic benefit? And that's, we're going to start with Ms. Walker. Or excuse me, Ms. Vincent, I think is your turn. Yeah, you didn't want it to be that way, did you? I'm counting, uh-huh.
That's the hardest question. Um, thank you. So I believe it depends on where you want to put it in the city. I, I personally think that we should be bringing more to the table in this community for the children, for the children that live here, for the children that are coming with families for vacation, like putting a wave rider park in the aquarium where it used to be, using solar, so it's very low, you know, cost and everything like that. But I don't think that if it is something that's attractive and it makes Moral Bay stand out, that it's necessarily a bad thing. But no, I don't think that we should allow someone to build a giant grotesque building that has nothing to do that says, hey, this is Moral Bay, it just says, oh, this is a really gaudy building. But if it's maybe like a carousel or, you know, a wave rider park or something that says, welcome to Moral Bay, or something to make it stand out, I don't think it would have a negative impact on the community if it was to really pull in that picturesque idea that we want to convey to the public.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lur.
If we not, if we're not economically viable, we will not be a city. That's bottom line, you know, it's, it's reality. We'll become, we'll become an adjunct to the county. We can't support our services if we're not economically viable. So that's always a big balancing act between development and economic viability. But saying so, there's, there's correct growth and there's incorrect growth. Affordable housing is, is a major topic. Affordable housing is, the only way you can create affordable housing is, is to either get, have free land, and we've got, we've, we've got our urban borders that are locked in, or to create more density. The place to create the more density that we've got, that's available, is in our downtown center. Where we can do pyramid-type development, New York developed this back in the early 1910s, they created airspace, airspace rights. So as you step back from the facade, you can then step up in height without impacting the views, without impacting the light, the light shed and also the wind and air into the community. This is where we can create multifamily, multifamily properties that bring life to the downtown, because we'll have people downtown, we'll have minimal car, car traffic because it's, there, it's walking, we create revenue for the city, we create revenue for the businesses that are down there. So, so it's a win-win on that, and it has to be done appropriately. You cannot have a, you know, a five-story building that's sitting right next to a residential district. We've, with the, with the height studies that have been done downtown, you can increase the heights downtown and not impact any of the public views. Or, so we have that ability and each project that comes forward will have to be evaluated on those standards. But by increasing, by requiring, if you go up higher, you create more housing and create residential above the commercial, then, then you're allowed to go higher in certain areas. This way, we get, we get the, the, the more affordable housing, we create life in the downtown, we create revenue for the city. So there's always that, that friction between the two, and I think it has to be thought, thoughtfully applied, and I think our new general, general plan, local coastal plan has applied that in certain, certain areas, and I think we can do, we can even do more of that.
Thank you. Mr. Turner.
Well, it seems to me to be as fair as you can, each, each case has to be evaluated individually to determine, in one case, maybe going up doesn't bother anyone's view whatsoever, but like was said, you don't want something in a residential area that's, that's two stories above everything else. So I wouldn't have any, I wouldn't see a problem with allowing a little more latitude for the city to, to determine on each individual case what's appropriate. I, I don't know any other way to do that that's fair.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart.
I have a business down there, and it doesn't bother me, the idea of going up a little higher. I definitely think, so I know you mentioned height variance and I would play on the word varied, having varied heights is going to be a better look than if it's a solid block on both sides of three-story buildings. But if you have that sort of eclectic mix of our little, my tiny little one-story next to Queen's Closet, which is quite a bit taller, but across the street, we do have a place, it's two stories, but with apartments above, I could see that as being a neat mix. If, if the architecture is done well, we could make it look great. I do wonder, I worry a little bit, you know, we do need to evaluate each project individually, but then we have a code, and if people are coming in with a project, it should apply equally. So I don't know how we work around that. And I would also prefer to see something like that done with specific projects. So again, not a spec building where somebody comes in and thinks, well, I'm going to build a three-story building and it's going to have, but not have tenants for it. So then you end up with situations like we have along Main Street and have had on the Boulevard, where we have empty, brand-new buildings, because somebody thought it was a great idea, but nobody wanted to rent it, so that would be my thoughts.
Thank you. And we will end with Ms. Walker.
I'm a big proponent of mixed-use buildings. Coming from Los Angeles, after the earthquake, we saw big blocks of apartment buildings that had to be rethought and it became mixed use. And it just invigorated the whole area. It invigorated businesses. Parking is something that has to be considered because when you are bringing in residents, there's another, again, the parking issue. So people who know more than me would have to look at that and see how feasible it is. But it does invigorate a community. I'm also for micro committees around a particular area, because then you have businesses that are already existing that may be affected on different sides, saying, I'm looking at the proposal, this is my input into it, yes or no, why I like it or why I don't. And to have guidelines that help regulate that helps people feel united instead of put upon. I know in Los Angeles, when I wanted to put a wall in front of our house, I had to go around to every neighbor across the street, behind me, we had an alley, people who never even saw my house, I had to go and say, this is what I want to do. And by getting all the neighbors involved and everyone saying, yes, 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 I could easily put it in and there was no problem. So looking at micro committees like that, when projects go in individually, I think would be really important and helpful.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for your excellent responses. We've got, I've got some notes here on some great ideas from everybody, I really appreciate that. I know it'll be a tough decision, and so, so with that, I'm going to welcome you to take a seat in front and, and ask our, our next group to come up in the interest of time. We will. Citizens Oversight Committee applicants, go ahead and take a seat, and we're going to go ahead and fill out our little voting slips, pass those to the clerk and announce that for you planning folks to let you know whom the choice will be. So council, two seats available, two vacancies, and you have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five opportunities. So you'll just pass that down?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry? Oh, absolutely. Yes, she may.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay. Mr. ... Yes, are you ready?
Sure. Madam Clerk, thank you, if you would just give us, we'll call on that.
Okay. Councilmember Davis voted for Mr. Lur and Ms. Stewart. Councilmember Heller voted for Ms. Stewart and Ms. Walker. Councilmember McPherson voted for Mr. Lur and Ms. Stewart. And Mayor Heading voted for Mr. Lur and Ms. Stewart, Mr. Lur. Ms. Stewart, you've been appointed to new floor, your terms on the planning commission through 2023.
And thank you again, thank you all for coming out and being part of that. There are a number of other commissions that always become available or advisory boards, so we do appreciate it and very much look forward to seeing you, those of you that were selected, thank you very much, look forward to your participation. We're going to move to Citizens Finance Advisory Committee and wait for Councilman Heller. Health break, always welcome. I'm going to entertain a motion with regard to Mr. William Bose, who was unable to attend, and I found that his reason for not being available to be appropriate, and he would like to be considered in absentia. So if there is a motion to allow that, he will remain on the ballot, and if there's a second, then positive vote, that would be.
I, I move that we allow Mr. Bose to remain on the ballot.
I second that.
Motion by Councilmember McPherson, second by Councilmember Davis to allow that. Any discussion?
Yes, I, I need to disclose that I met with Mr. Bose and conducted a personal interview.
And I need to also say that, I did the same thing.
And I did as well, ex parte, okay?
As did I.
Okay.
On the phone, not in person.
All right. So we do have a motion with a second, if there's no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
So welcome, we have three here, but we do have four positions available with four folks, and so you, you might have to really mess up to not get appointed, so I just want to share that with you. No, I do welcome you, thank you for, all, all of you for coming out. I am going to ask for maybe a one-minute introduction, starting with Ms. Magnola, and, and then each of you just a little information about you and why you want to be part of the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and thank you again for responding and, and wanting to be part of this.
Thank you. Hearing check? Okay. I, I've had the pleasure of serving on the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee when it was initially the Citizens Oversight Committee for approximately eight and a half years. I've also served on the WRFCAC, the Water Reclamation Facility Advisory, and also on the Blue Ribbon Commission. And during that time, I've learned a lot about municipal finance and, and being able to hopefully help the city. So my background is actually about 30 years in aerospace and IT, information technology. I've been in business management, corporate finance, computer contract negotiation, and software licensing optimization and terms and conditions. So I retired a little bit over a year ago, and I'm also involved in other activities, AAUW, tech track for junior high school girls, newcomers club, and I'm also the lead inspector for the county election office. So that's a little bit of my background, if you need any more. I have worked with all the council members, but you can see it in my application package. So thank you for this opportunity.
Great, thank you, and welcome to Lois Johnson. Ms. Johnson, thank you for being here. If you introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah. Hi, thank you for inviting us to, to be here today. I am currently working. vice president at financial institutions, vice president of internal audit. I have a pretty good financial background. I don't have a municipal background. So that, you know, that would be, I look forward to actually learning about it. And I've served on committees and found that I get a great deal of satisfaction in participating. It makes me feel more connected to my community and I'm looking to do that here. I love living here and feel it would be an honor to participate in a way that I'm able. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you and welcome. Mr. Alexander, welcome. Introduce yourself.
My name's Homer Alexander. I'm a retired small business owner. I was the chair of the District Transaction Tax Oversight Committee from its inception until January of 2015. I am currently the treasurer of the Morro Bay, of the Community Foundation of Astero Bay, and also the treasurer of the Friends of the Fire Department. I've been following the city's finances for a number of years and I believe I could add value to the committee.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. I will start with Councilmember Davis. And if we could start with Ms. Johnson first, I'd appreciate that. And go ahead with that. Red, your question, sir?
What do you see as the primary value of the CAFR? And I'm going to have to ask Jennifer for.
I'm familiar with that, actually. Well, number one, it's not optional, so, but I think in, it serves the purpose of giving insight into the financial plan and function of, in this case of Morro Bay. So it's done at many different levels. The county has also to complete a CAFR. So it's publicly available information and I think very useful.
Great, thank you. Mr. Alexander?
CAFR, or as I prefer to call it, audited financial statements are the lifeblood of any organization. It, in my mind, is the most important document that the city's financial department produces.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Bagnola?
Agree. The comprehensive annual financial report is a public document, very, certainly very useful. I believe this is the third year the city has submitted it and maybe 150-plus pages, but I think there's a lot of information, good information in there, but you don't have to read all 150. You can look at the reports, see the findings. And so for the citizens that are interested in that, and the public as well, I think it serves a purpose and I believe we've been recognized in past years for submitting our CAFR.
Refreshing to hear none of the respondents consider it to be an agricultural term. That's good. I'll go to Councilmember McPherson.
All right. What are your, this is my question for you. What are your ideas and how the city could increase its revenues?
My turn?
I'm sorry, yes. Ms. Bagnola.
Okay, so to increase the revenues, first of all, in the Measure Q, the District Transaction Tax, they have been steadily increasing since every year I've been serving. Originally, it was under 700,000. Last year, it was 1,062,000. So that speaks for actually, not the CFAC group, but actually the tourism and the economy and what's happening in Morro Bay, which is a good sign. But increasing the other revenues, again, some of that's a factor of the economy, but there's other things we could be doing in terms of what's actually some of the other candidates mentioned. For instance, if you start looking at things like the high school, the wrestling tournament they had last weekend, and all the visitors that brought in, maybe cooperating with them, perhaps pickleball, that's really increasing in popularity. I happened to be in India when they had the global tournament. It was televised, it's not an old people's sport anymore, by the way, a lot of young people playing it. So there's a surfing competition, all the other things at the Morro Bay. I think you have to make gradual increases rather than always looking for a tax increase. We may have to have a special tax increase at some point to keep the city economically viable, but there's other smaller things, shorter things we can be doing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Alexander?
I think, I think one of the keys to increasing revenue is to develop, for the five of you, to develop policies to encourage people to invest in the city. And for instance, if you look at our downtown core, with the last major investment was the Reed Building, which was 15 years ago. Other cities have put policies in place to encourage investment, and so there's a lot of models available. The other thing would be to promote our, what I consider to be our major asset, which is the Pacific Ocean and the harbor and everything that goes with it. As much as the city talks about trying to encourage Google West to move to Morro Bay, I think that we really need to strengthen our tourism industry. Simple math will tell you that the city gets 1% from the sales tax, less a little bit of administrative pay, plus a half a percent for Measure Q. So $100 transaction at Miners is $1.44 to the city. Somebody stays in the Embarcadero Inn and the city gets 10% TOT and 3% to promote itself, so it gets 13 bucks. I'll take the 13 over the 144 any day of the week. And I think that we should try to encourage investment in our visitor-serving areas.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
It seems that the TOT is a great source of revenue for the city and there's more opportunity, I believe. Sometimes you'll go around town and you'll see no vacancies. Other times, it's very slow here. So if we could find a way to fill up the hotels when it's slow, I think that would be a great, a great way to increase revenue.
Great, thank you very much. We'll go ahead with Councilmember Heller and we'll start with Mr. Alexander.
So transparency is a big issue in government today, certainly in the city. If you're selected to the planning, excuse me, to the CFAC, that was a little joke. What would you do to make the sometimes difficult financial information more comprehensible to the average resident?
I think that's a challenge for everybody at every level of either the public sector or the private sector, is to take finances and reduce them down so the average person can understand them. Be honest with you, I'm not sure it's achievable. I think the city's made some progress. The previous members of the Finance Committee have developed a pretty simple trifold that does bring the budget highlights to, you know, to a level. I don't know how many people are taking advantage of the current software the city's using, the open government. Whether or not that's just too much in the weeds for the average citizens, I don't know. But I really don't have any answer to your question, Councilmember Heller, because I'm just not sure it's something that can be accomplished.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Well, I think I deal with this on a continual basis. And my thought is, when possible, keep it simple. It is not easy when you're dealing with numerous funds, but I, in the meetings that I've been able to observe online, I think that the staff do a great job, Jennifer does a great job at explaining. I, of course, my background is accounting, so that may be partly why I feel that way, but I remember a comment about, you know, using graphs where possible. It helps tremendously. Graphics are a lot easier for people to follow than numbers and numbers and more numbers on a page. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Bagnola?
Thanks. As Mr. Alexander mentioned, and as two of you, Ms. McPherson and Ms. Addis know, when you were on CFAC, we have been working for over two years on these infographics, budget-friendly reports, and have put several on the website. And we have the latest one, which will be on our agenda at the next meeting. It's an iterative process. I'm sure we'll get some feedback. Maybe we have too much information on the trifold, then we'll take it off, then it'll be too little information. But we will proceed with that. The only other idea that recently has come to me, as I saw somewhere, where you could come up with a metric, that would be what the average family, household in this city is paying in property taxes going to our general fund, for instance. I suspect that's around 2,000, 2,400 a year. And I saw a graphic somewhere that was really interesting. It showed what that buys you, 24/7 fireplace, parks, everything, labor. And then it said, that amounts to, you know, whatever it is, $180, $200 a month. And this is what $180 a month buys you, two dinners out or four dinners out, whatever. It was so simplistic, but it was very realistic because when members come to council in meetings and they want the Surf Street Stairs or whatever else, you could then say, okay, the Surf Street Stairs at 800,000, that equates to $160 of your 2,000. Now do you still want it? Because we're going to have to make, or you as our leaders are going to have to make some very difficult decisions.
Great point. Thank you very much. And Councilmember Addis, start with, let's see, I think we're going to start with Ms. Johnson this time.
What can you say to entice the general public to watch CFAC on TV or come to a meeting?
Nothing.
Free lunch? It's always a challenge. And I think if you make it relevant to them, that's the only way, is how can it make a difference in their life? And I think exactly what Barbara is saying is a great, is a great idea. Completely agree with that, is make it relatable.
Great. Mr. Alexander?
I agree with what Barbara said earlier about some general things, but somehow publicizing the meetings that will involve the review of some contentious issues. Everybody is very concerned about the cost associated with the new water reclamation facility. And now that the Finance Committee is going to be looking at that, hopefully in a lot of detail, that somehow publishing that on, you know, the third Tuesday of February, that's the topic. And I think in that case, more people will become interested around budget time. If the city, hopefully this doesn't happen, but if the city needs to reduce expenses, i.e. services, that needs to be published because those are the kind of things that people are very, very interested in, is what happens when you cut my service?
Mr. Alexander stole my thunder. Exactly. I agree with what both my colleagues have said here. And I would also, even some of those smaller contentious issues, like the example I just gave you, get those off the council's plate so that it's not on the agenda as a consent item and everybody's walking in and voicing their opposition. Get it on one of the other citizens' boards, let us discuss it, and that might get a little more interest generated for those firms.
You got it. You've got it. It's all yours. I'll forego my question in the interest of time. I want you to note that we do have three terms that are four-year, and then one of the terms is to fill a current vacancy that will end in 1/31/22. The other three terms will end on 1/31/23. Are there any of the individual candidates that are interested in one or the other? If not, we'll.
I'll take the shorter term because I've been serving for almost nine years and I may have other aspirations. Thank you.
If you're selected, you would prefer the shorter term. Okay, thank you for that. All right. You bet. So what I'll ask is that we'll go ahead and make the change and ask our harbor advisory board applicants to come up. You guys can have a seat. We'll go ahead and ask council to vote and we'll read the results. Did I get it wrong? Excuse me, Public Works Advisory Board, I apologize. I was looking ahead, my P-Web. Sorry about that. Thank you.
How did I miss that?
Oh, there it is. There it is. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for correcting me. Feel free to take a health care, if you need it. You're good. Me too. I'm good.
We have allowed that. We've got.
Usually all this, if it's.
Yeah, and we've got a planning commissioner that gets appointed to the PAC. So those two committees.
This one is quite easy.
Yes, but do you know about serving our two committees, if there's any code in our policies that, I know some are appointed, like planning commission, et cetera?
The council has the discretion to appoint someone to committees.
Okay, thank you. Great. All right, real call?
So this one is very straightforward. The council respected Ms. Bagnola's request and she received a 5-0 vote to serve the term ending in 2022. The other three applicants, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Bose, and Ms. Johnson, were appointed to fill four-year terms, all 5-0 vote.
Congratulations. Thank you all for being here. Very much appreciate it. Look forward to your service. And we'll move on to the Public Works Advisory Board, or P-Web. Welcome. Another tough one here, three applicants for three positions. So briefly, we have Tori, correct me if I'm wrong, if I say incorrectly, Tori Biles, Paul.
Just one position.
I'm sorry, one vacancy, one position, three applicants, Mr. Paul Donnelly and Mr. Glenn Turner also as well. Thank you very much for correcting that. We'll start with introductions and I'll start with Mr. Turner.
I've already done it once, you want me to do it again?
Just why you want to be on P-Web maybe is also.
Well, it's, am I on here? It's just at a point in my life where I want to volunteer and I've been a building contractor my whole life and done lots of public works projects, and I thought it'd be nice to volunteer. That's what it comes down to.
Great, thank you. Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, I've lived here in Morro Bay most of my life and I'm currently on the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee. But back at the beginning, when P-Web was first formed, I was on that original committee. There were several committees in town that were now compiled in what we now call Public Works Advisory Board. There was the Street and Tree Committee, the Cable Franchise Committee, the Water Advisory Board, I was in all of those. Also served time as a council member here and as a vice mayor. My background is, I'm retired now, but I'm a registered civil engineer. I'm licensed in California and in Hawaii. I'm also a professional land surveyor, licenser in California and in Hawaii. I worked for the county of San Luis Obispo Public Works Department for over 27 years. I worked on many bridge projects in the county, my favorite being the one up in Cambria on Moonstone Beach Drive. We got an award for, from the American Society of Civil Engineers for that project. I was also the project manager and resident engineer for the construction of the Chor Valley Pipeline. And back in the '70s, I worked for the City of Pasadena Public Works Department on their survey crew. And in 1980, we laid out the Rose Bowl for Super Bowl XIV. So I think I could bring some benefit to the board and the new community.
Thank you. And Mr. Biles?
Yeah, I'm an economist. I have my own consulting company that I've had since 1997. I have a master's in economics and environmental studies from Southern Oregon University, and a bachelor's degree from UCSD in San Diego. And I have also some professional certifications in different kinds of econometric modeling, one from Stanford University and another one from IMPLAN, which is often used in regional planning projects. My background for 20 years was in Silicon Valley, and then in the last 15 years, I've been up in Southern Oregon doing regional economic development consulting, as well as working for the SBDC in charge of their general, as a general manager of the market research component of the Oregon SBDC. I'm a native Californian, grew up in Pasadena. My parents moved up to Atascadero in the '80s. They looked at building a house in Morro Bay at the time, but that was when you had to get somebody else to give up your sewer hookup to build a new house at that time. So they ended up going up to Atascadero. So I've been coming to the area, though, since the '80s, and love the area. And I've just moved here from Oregon about a year and a half ago. So I'm relatively new to Morro Bay. I live in Morro Bay, North Morro Bay, but I've been familiar with the area since the '80s. I am interested in being on the Public Works, Public Advisory Board, because I bring that economic approach to financing the water, the new water system. And I've done some projects in the past where, for example, in the City of Santa Rosa, where I developed the tariff schedule for a broadband network that was used by many departments in the county and city of Sonoma County, that is, around Santa Rosa. And so I am looking to bring ways of looking at how to, A, bring the new sewer and water system to fruition, but as going forward here with the obvious water challenges that will be plaguing the area for years to come, bringing on new technologies like cisterns and secondary water sources and that kind of thing, new technologies to help the water problem here. So I thought that being part of the advisory board would be a way to bring forth my expertise in that area.
Thank you very much. And we'll start with Mr. Donnelly, if we could, for the first question, and I think Councilmember McPherson, it's your turn.
All right. Welcome, everybody. And if you're new, you may not be able to answer this, but my question is, what do you see as the highest priority infrastructure needs for our city?
Everybody had the same question.
Well, other than the water reclamation facility. You know, one of the things that's kind of linked to that, that has been addressed, is the leaky pipes in town. In 2015, we had a rate increase. It's supposed to do some of that. Seems to me that over that time, that we've accumulated enough money that we can go and fix some of that. I also noticed that recently the CFAC deferred a lot of your Measure Q money for storm drain improvements, but with these recent storms, I think the council might want to revisit that and put some money to your storm drain system here in town. Beyond that, those are your big, major, you know, public works projects that need to be done, and we're hoping we're on track with the sewer project.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Biles?
Well, definitely the water, the water system here. And I'm interested, too, though, to see, you know, I'd be interested in looking at usage numbers for residents and commercial establishments here, and seeing how alternative technologies, such as cisterns and capture systems that have been promoted in the past, if those could be increased, or what kind of impact the increase in that use of that technology would have on the core water system, and see if that would, you know, if that would have an impact. Also, being able to look across other communities dealing with water shortages and seeing what, and sort of develop a list of best practices around that kind of, around alternative technologies to augment the water system here.
Mr. Turner?
Well, with everything that's been said, the water issue is the, the water plant's obviously the big issue. And beyond that, I don't offhand know of any projects that have any knowledge of them, but that infrastructure, I think, is, moving forward for the next 50 years, we need that project. So I think that's the big issue, for sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Heller, we'll start with Mr. Biles on this one. You good?
Thank you all for applying. It's a very important board committee, I think, for the city to have. Like most cities, we have millions of dollars in deferred maintenance, paving and other parts of the infrastructure. What are your thoughts about how to finance the, all the deferred maintenance and how to fix all the things that need repair in this town?
You know, I'm also wondering if relationships with key vendors, equipment vendors or service providers, third-party service providers to the water system, have any pockets of financing or alternative, you know, performance contracts that may alter the financing equation for some of these things? So I think there's creative financing that could be looked into, as opposed to just straightforward, "We need X amount of dollar." Well, you start off by looking at, looking, you know, quantifying the price of the improvements, but I think there might be sources of financing around those that we could look for. I mean, even, I don't know if there's grants or other alternative sources of financing that might be out there.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Donnelly?
You want me to repeat it just one more time for me?
Sure. We have a lot of deferred maintenance in this town, and paving, and because we have the bay, there's a lot of deferred maintenance, and it adds up to tens of millions of dollars. What are your thoughts on how to finance and make those repairs?
Well, like any city in the state that sells gasoline, you're pushing a lot of that state highway account money back to you, and that's mainly to be used for maintenance of your streets, and it should be done. I don't know if it's been used properly, but if you want to look for another source of money, the council of governments, in which the former mayor we used to sit on, is a good place to get your grants, safe routes to school monies are available, there's other transportation funding there. If you vie for those funds, and maybe the other committee members, the county will see the need in Morro Bay and allocate money our way. That's the best way to get it, is that money is available, there's lots of it.
Thank you. And Mr. Turner?
Well, it seems to me that nobody likes more taxes, but raising money via taxes where the people within the city know that every dime they're paying is going to be spent right here in Morro Bay, I think is a good way to accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll start, Councilmember Addis, we'll start with Mr. Donnelly this time.
Sorry, they took mine also. But I have a few, so I'll just ask one. How would you rate our road condition, and what would you do that could actually work to improve it?
One of the things, and I'm pretty sure the city does the same thing as the county does, you rate a level of service for each of the roads. And in my opinion, the system in Morro Bay is at a pretty low level of service, a level of service, probably C or less. There's been some resurfacing in recent years, but it's been done poorly, in my opinion. My street, for right now, enjolates like you can't believe, because the way that was put down and rolled, it wasn't done right. If it were a county project, it would have been rejected. So I think that we need to attend to with more, better inspection on the projects that do come into town and how it's done, because if you're paying for that money, it better be done right.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Well, I don't know if I have any input on that. I don't know how, you've limited the amount of funds you have available to accomplish a certain amount of work. You just allot those funds the best you can, and I think that's all you can do.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Biles?
Well, I would just add that tying street improvements to new building construction would obviously be one way to increase infrastructure, sidewalks and that kind of thing. So, you know, tying the road improvement budgets to the amount of new construction or remodeling construction going on.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Davis, sir. Start with Mr. Turner this time as well. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I need to say that I am heartened and encouraged that all of the council members seem to be on the same page, because we're all, all of you have asked questions I wanted to ask. So let me bring a new one. What barriers need to be overcome to provide citywide broadband internet?
Oh, you're out of my wheelhouse. I don't know that I would know how to do that.
Okay. Fair enough. And Mr. Biles?
Well, if the city has an agreement, and through the utility, I'm thinking maybe it'd probably be at the county level, but, or any agreements you have with private service providers who are providing cable hookups or cellular capacity here in the city, and I don't know if this is the case anymore, but it has been the case where they are obligated to provide municipal and county government with some access to that, to that capacity. And through that, that would be the basis for providing a broadband network service that even the city might be able to, that potentially a city could even offer as a part of its utility service.
Mr. Donnelly?
Well, currently, I'm unaware of any barriers at all. You know, we get internet at home and we have Wi-Fi, but as far as what it would take to do that, I'm sure the private industry would come up with something to make it viable in our town.
We'll start with Mr. Biles again on this one. Would there be any advantage, you think, with regard to the city in terms of putting in new smart water meters? And if so, what would those advantages be and/or disadvantages?
I think the advantage is simplicity and low cost and long-term operational costs, because you collect data, collect the usage data relatively easier than sending out people to go get the data. I think it's, you know, the downside is it's costly upfront to put that in.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yeah, I know several years ago that the city wanted to do this. I don't know at that time of whether or not it was determined cost-effective, but if it's going to cost more than it actually saves, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't recommend it.
Well, I agree with what's said. You'd have to get an idea what the initial cost is going to be and how long the payback would be on that. It just seems like it would be, it'd be a hard thing to justify to me.
Great. I think that ends our questions. Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here. If you want to just take a seat, I'll ask our, I think if I get it right this time, our Harbor Advisory Board folks to come on up and take a seat. Again, council will be voting for one individual. This is for a four-year term ending 1/31/23, and...
Councilmember Addis voted for Mr. Biles. Councilmember Davis voted for Mr. Biles. Councilmember Heller voted for Mr. Donnelly. Councilmember McPherson voted for Mr. Biles, and Mayor Heding voted for Mr. Biles. Mr. Biles is appointed.
Thank you all for applying. I do appreciate that. And we will welcome our new member. And now we'll move to the Harbor Advisory Board. We have one vacancy on the recreational boating representative side, and one applicant for that, ending January 31, 2023. And then on the waterfront leaseholder representative side, we do have one withdrawal. Ms. Paula Radke, if you didn't receive that earlier, has withdrawn, and we have two individuals for one vacancy there. Actually, we'll be voting for these as separate issues. And here we have the recreational and the waterfront leaseholder, and that's on your form. Just note the two differences. So with that, welcome. Thank you for coming out today again, and we appreciate you being here. If you just give us a one-minute introduction, we'd appreciate that, and we'll start with Ms. Hanson.
Hello. My name is Reese Hanson. I have Under the Sea Gallery and TLC Family Enterprises. As far as my position, being a part of the Harbor Advisory Board, I wear many hats. I went to school for marine biology and had a minor in environmental ethics, worked with the EPA on watersheds. I also have, one of my other hats is I have kids in the community. I have three young boys, and I want them to have a better tomorrow, in both an economic tomorrow as well as an environmental tomorrow. I want them to be able to have jobs and live in Morro Bay and stay close to me, close. And then I'm also a leaseholder and a sublease, master leasing and a subleasing on the Embarcadero. So I have those aspects to think about when working on the Harbor Advisory Board. I also am a boat owner, and I was previous liveaboard, so I know what it's like there out on the water, and what's expected, and what we need out there. My position, I've been on the Harbor Advisory Board for the last six months, because I just filled one vacancy that was coming up soon. So I feel like I just started, and I think I'm just finally finding my voice and getting comfortable with speaking on a televised situation, and I'm following the proper procedures. And I think I finally seconded something last meeting, so feeling a little more comfortable. So I just look forward to doing more discussing and all the aspects of the committee in the future, hopefully. I feel my service has just begun, and I would like to fill a full-term position. And then I'm also a leaseholder and a sublease, master leasing and a subleasing on the Embarcadero. So I have those aspects to think about when working on the harbor advisory board. I also am a boat owner, and I was previous liveaboard, so I know what it's like there out on the water and what's expected and what we need out there. My position, I've been on the harbor advisory board for the last six months, because I just filled one vacancy that was coming up soon. So I feel like I just started, and I think I'm just finally finding my voice and getting comfortable with speaking on a televised situation and following the proper procedures. And I think I finally seconded something last meeting, so feeling a little more comfortable. So I just look forward to doing more discussing and all the aspects of the committee in the future, hopefully. I feel my service has just begun, and I would like to fill a full-term position.
Thank you. Mr. McClish, welcome.
I lived here about 40 years. I moved here, first thing I did is I bought a boat, I lived on it, sailed around, taught myself how to sail, and have been having sailing adventures ever since. My wife and I, we have three kids, two of them are off in college and beyond, and then we have one that's still here in high school. I joined the Morro Bay Yacht Club about 25 years ago. I was Commodore back in '07. I've been coaching kids there in the youth program for about 15 years and was the founding president for the Morro Bay Youth Sailing Foundation, a nonprofit. I'm still doing that. And we support, with that nonprofit, we support youth and collegiate sailing in our community. So that's, Cal Poly is involved through our program and also through the yacht club. Also work closely with the Maritime Museum, and I've been on the Morro Bay Ave for five years. And, yeah, I just think that this is a harbor town, which is rare, and we're the only one in this county, which is a real harbor town. And I know that's an added bit of work for you guys and for all of us, and I'm happy to be part of that decision-making.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mrs. Vincent. And I'll let you, you've introduced yourself, maybe tell us why you're interested in the harbor advisory board.
Well, I work on the harbor. I have a very strong background with the water. I was a merchant marine. I went through many different trainings with the Coast Guard in addition to the Navy SEALs. I'm very comfortable with water. I was a lifeguard for a really long time. I taught swimming, and I wanted to represent not only where I'm centrally doing my business, but creating opportunities for jobs for people, being a voice for the younger community, as to really get people entranced again with, you know, what happens at the water. We're the last fishing village in California, so what does that entail, where it's a dying breed? So to really just get involved and understand what's important and what's needed and to be a voice against, for people who haven't been here very long, who want to be involved in the community that work in that area.
Great, thank you very much. And I'll start this time, and possibly if we could start with Mr. McClish. My question's this, our harbor infrastructure improvement needs are great. If you agree with this, how would you address the issue or propose it be addressed? If you disagree, why do you disagree?
Oh, I would, I would agree. How I would address this is we're just doing it one item at a time, pretty much. Some of these things are long-term, and so we're looking at them in a schedule that way. Staff's doing a pretty good job of always keeping those different items on our plate. And, you know, we're an advisory board, so we're not making concrete decisions, but we have our input.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Vincent?
I definitely do think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. The infrastructure is crumbling, it's not safe, it also does not look appealing to the eye. So I think that a lot of fundraising needs to be happening to bring more activities to the water, definitely utilizing the youth community that we have. You know, you've got Cal Poly, you've got Questa. We could get grants and scholarships and things like that for just having at least some water. And if it looks like the way it does, we're not going to get those grants or funds or anything like that. But to really bring in the youth into it and allow them to explore and utilize it in the manner that it's supposed to be done.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson?
Can you state that question one more time?
Sure, yes.
I missed the very beginning of it.
"Our harbor infrastructure improvement needs are great," statement. If you agree with that, how would you address the issue or propose it be addressed, because you're an advisory body? If you disagree, why do you think it's not an issue?
Okay. Yeah, there's just a lot of components that go into the harbor infrastructure, and so on a case-by-case basis, I think that they should be reviewed and discussed and worked on.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will go to Councilmember Addis. You're up, and we'll start with Ms. Vincent. Ms. Vincent? Yes?
What do you see as the greatest assets down on the harbor? And how would you amplify those? Not just to bring more people, but to bring more money and to have Morro Bay known better?
Well, I think the greatest asset is the wildlife. Everybody comes to see the seals, everybody comes to see the otters. They're beautiful, they're right there, they come walk down by my business, they stand there to look at these beautiful creatures. I would approach rescue organizations and charities and help us to make it, you know, to fund it so that we could bring people in to care about that environment. But I think that if they're already there, we should protect them, and we can utilize that for our benefit.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson?
My position on that is just accessibility and having benefits for everyone on the waterfront. As far as, if you build it, they will come. If we have a nice area, people will come there. So just try and have a really nice area and have it accessible to people.
Mr. McClish?
Yeah, I would agree, the accessibility. And I would say the marine-related businesses that we have along the waterfront, our working waterfront, how they contribute to that, whether you live here or have lived here all your life or whatever, or if you're visiting, you want to be, that's why you're here, and you want to touch it, you want to be part of it, you want to see those animals up close. And we need to protect our working waterfront so that we always have that accessibility.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Davis, and we'll start with Ms. Hanson.
Yes. What does the city need to do to get a boatyard built?
A boatyard will be a business. A business needs to create funds to run that business, at the very least. I feel that a boatyard, the main obstacle of that is making it a lucrative business, and all of the costs that are affiliated, all of the things that have to go into place in order to have that happen, might not look as appealing to a business person to come in and do those things. So that might be one of the scenarios where the city works towards making that a more favorable business for somebody to come into by doing extra things, permits, whatnot, allowing the space to be available for those individuals. If it actually does happen and there is a boatyard, that might create more possibilities of more boats being able to be in the harbor. And that would be an asset, and it would be really important for a lot of the different boats that are here to stay here, because even my boat, I had to take it down to Avila, and it just became so burdensome that it was like, okay, well, never mind, I'm just going to stay here and not work on my boat. So there's a lot of possibilities that once it is built, it would become more lucrative. But as it is standing right now, if we really want to see a boatyard, we're going to have to work as a city to help any business person who wants to come in be able to accomplish that.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent?
I may have a bizarre answer for this, but if we could create a nonprofit to help the community of the special needs children, so where it would be a business or a nonprofit for the city of Morro Bay, and you could hire the youth that have special needs that can work on the boat, so the boat owners understand what they're doing when they have the boats come in, that they're going to, you know, they're going to have assistance from special needs children, and so that it's giving back to our community, we're making a little bit of profit, and it's a good thing all around.
Great, thank you. Mr. McClish?
Well, this is a subject I've spent some time on, I think five years. Yeah, Morro Bay, when I first moved here, there were two boatyards here, and there were less boats here, and they were both busy. Now we barely have one boatyard, and we have, you know, like I said, more boats. To make it work in this day and age, I think it's going to have to be a public-private enterprise, where the city would be a leaseholder, and you would interest someone to run the boatyard. This is not your average business. You're probably not going to see too many people in this town that know anything about running a boatyard. So it would definitely have to spark some interest from people outside. I know people love this, coming to this community and retiring this community and being able to work here, so I think you could find that interest. We're working on feasibility, financial feasibility, RFP right now that's out there, and soon to hopefully have some applicants for that, and we'll see what we get from there. And then we'll see what the next step is. But personally, I think as a harbor town, it's part of the infrastructure that you need. I mean, it's great to have all those boats there, and the boating community, you've got to take care of that part of, you know, everybody's boat, so that's just part of the harbor town needs.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, I'll have a go with you, and then Ms. Hanson, if you could start?
Thank you all for applying, first of all. Really appreciate you taking the time to do this and stepping up to help the community. There are a lot of leases involved in the waterfront for boats and all sorts of physical spaces. What is your approach to managing those leases?
Well, I'm on the lease update group currently, so I'm definitely having a part in that. We're editing or putting in our feedback on what it is that we would want to have in that lease management policy. There's so many parts of that, but, and I hope to work on all of them. So in future, I'll just continue that process.
Mr. McClish?
Well, I look forward to our committee's findings, and so that we can discuss this more, if I'm to continue on.
Great, and Ms. Vincent?
As somebody who just opened a business, who went through all of this, I think that as a, as a new person of new business coming in, they need to understand why they're doing all of the steps that they're doing and what it contributes to. There's a lot of running around and miscommunication, so I would try to find a way that it was more of a straight shot instead of a zigzag all over town trying to get everything approved, and really try and help businesses that would help our community by bringing in new and wonderful, exciting things for people to enjoy here.
Great, thank you very much. And, did you get everybody? I guess I did. And Councilmember McPherson, and we'll start with Mr. McClish this time.
I think all of my questions have been answered already. Let me just ask, because we've talked about a number of issues now facing the harbor and the waterfront, what do you see as the top priorities that the harbor advisory board needs to work on first? What are the most important things that need to be addressed?
Well, I think our lease update is a big one. I would say that would be our first one.
Great, and Ms. Hanson?
Priority-wise, what I know to be important is the lease management policy group. Then we've also been kind of figuring out some final steps or going into the eel grass and how that should be handled. Something that's really important to me personally is any lease sites that are vacant right now and how it is that we can get them up and running, as well as, what was the other thing? Just as far as like some of the lease sites, wanting to get that figured out. And I really want to know about all of the nonprofit situations and how that will work into what the waterfront is going to look like. There's a lot more. Oh, and then auditing of the lease sites, that's important too, so we're going to have to work on that in the light lease program.
Good, thank you. Okay, and Ms. Vincent?
I think it's really important that we look at the visibility of the, when you're walking along the Embarcadero to go down to the water. A lot of the places are really dark and dingy looking, so maybe if we focused on making it more visually appealing, people would spend more time down and exploring that area versus just walking along the boardwalk and then maybe glancing down, because there's other businesses there. So maybe if we brought more lighting, or if we brought like some kind of lanterns that would kind of appeal to the city and its picturesqueness, and also just make it very visually appealing so that people spend more time in this area.
Great. We've got everybody here, thanks to each of you for applying, and we very much appreciate you coming out. We'll exchange and have our last folks come up, and if you guys want to take a seat, we'll go ahead and do our voting and announce the lucky winners here. Harbor advisory board folks, appreciate you, and if we could get the T-bid folks to come on up. Thank you so much again for being out.
Mayor?
This is the tourism group. I think we're going to do everybody, given the time. Do we have enough seats? We don't have enough seats, my goodness. I apologize. Or microphones, huh? So I apologize. I'm changing this midterm, this is getting late, and I'll ask for our T-bid members at large, Mr., I'm sorry if I say it wrong, Kernet, Ms. Dickinson, Mr. Green, Mr. Newton, Ms. Solu, and Mr. Vincent first. Ms. Vincent, I'm sorry. I think I've met you before. And the remainder, if you want to just be seated, we'll get the other folks, the other two folks up at the end, how's that? Mr. Patel and Mr. Sue, sorry about that. We just didn't have enough seats to do everybody. Thank you. I appreciate that. Work with me, it's my third meeting here, okay. So this is the T-bid member-at-large group, we have two vacancies, we have six applicants. If you could, in a minute or less, give us a little bit about whom you are, question? I'm sorry. It is late, isn't it? Madam Clerk, could you announce the results of our last polling for the harbor advisory board?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Councilmember Addis voted for Mr. McClish and Ms. Hanson. Councilmember Davis voted for Mr. McClish and Ms. Hanson. Councilmember Heller voted for Mr. McClish and Ms. Vincent. Councilmember McPherson voted for Ms. Councilmember McPherson voted for Ms. McLeish and Ms. Hanson and Mayor Heding voted for Mr. McLeish and Ms. Hanson. So, Mr. McLeish and Ms. Hanson are appointed to the Harbor Advisory Board for your term.
Congratulations to you both. Appreciate again your involvement and continued involvement now on the Harbor Advisory Board. My councilmember Davis, it keeps me in line here, I'll be able to make it through the meeting. Thank you. Hypoglycemia is hitting. All right. Thank you, folks, for being here. Just, we'll start with Mr. Green and then I'll move around one minute or less, just kind of a who you are and why you're interested in the Harbor Advisory Board. Oh, crackers.
I'm interested in the Tourism Business Improvement District Advisory Board. I'm Sean Green. I just finished my first at-large member term. I've lived in the city now for almost three years and I teach at Cal Poly. I have background in both creative writing and finance. I care about this city and I care about tourism and I care about putting heads in beds, but I also think a part of the at-large position here on the advisory board is to keep residents in mind and kind of walk that line where you're sticking up for residents as part of this board while also focusing on driving heads in beds. So more recently, we've been focusing on not only event-driven tourism traffic, but potential installations and minor infrastructure improvements that I think we can continue working towards moving forward.
Great, thank you. Mr. Newton, sir. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Taylor Newton and I've been on the T-Bid since before it was under the new management with the city. And I just, I think that it's really important to remember that it's an assessment of the hoteliers is how it started with me. That's the key point that I was taught was that it's, we're using their money and we need to keep that as a priority. And so I always led with that, but I also know from my, over a decade, working with the city on different nonprofit projects and different service groups and boards, that turnover with staff is, it's just, it can really drain time and money. And so working with the director of our tourism department is essential. So, when I come to T-Bid, I constantly think about what's best for the hotels and what's best for the tourism director and then what's best for the city and the citizens, because it affects them. Lastly, I wanted to say that I feel like you have some great candidates up here, all these people here tonight. And I'd like to withdraw my candidacy, actually. I am just overwhelmed with work and travel and family and I wanted to be of service, but I don't think you need me. I think you've got enough people and this is just a real drain on my time and energy. And if you didn't have the people, I would serve again, but I think you can do it. So that's all I got to say.
Well, let me thank you for your past service. You've done a great service to the community and we appreciate that and thank you for your honesty, obviously, as always and being candid. And sorry to see you go, but work, when work calls, work calls.
It does, you're defined.
Thank you, Taylor. All right. Appreciate it. Ms. Solu?
Hi, I'm Joan Solu. I'm a 20-year resident of Morro Bay. I provided a resume to you, which I hope that you read, which might allow you to get to know me, although some of us have had children on soccer teams together and others of us have been at bike events and so I feel like I know all of you. I also, in my 20 years, have owned five hotels in this community. I own no commercial properties now, I want to be very, very clear. I own zero commercial properties here. We do have a residence here in Morro Bay that we love, that we raised our children in. I, with my husband and our team of very capable and highly motivated staff members, ran our businesses successfully in our community and hoped that the level of success that we had also raised the success in our community. We have vision of feeling that if we're doing good, everyone else should be doing well also, everyone around us and everyone on our team. We feel very strongly that Morro Bay is a wonderful place to live, work, raise your family and then hopefully someday be able to retire here. The reason why this is also important to me is I served on this board for a number of years. I was actually on the steering committee that put the original ordinance together with the city of Morro Bay and the former city attorney and the former, many former mayors and city council members I've worked with. I think that this is an important mechanism for economic growth and I listened very intently to the finance folks who were being interviewed along the way here and some of the things that they said were very key. We don't have a huge place to build out, we're limited on what we can do economically and until we find that golden egg, we need to be able to grow our tourism in a way that's meaningful in our community and meaningful to our economy. And lastly, I'll just say that for many years, folks said to me, "Well, you're on that board because you have a personal financial gain out of it." I just want to say, "I'm back."
Ms. Dickinson, welcome.
Thank you for having me here. I'm Nancy Dickinson. I've been, bought my house here in Morro Bay in 2015 and as I said in my introduction to you, I thought this was going to be my part-time home. I was living and working in Silicon Valley, which I've done for the last 30 years, starting at Apple in the 1980s, and I thought, "Well, this is where I'll come," right? It only took me 10 months to say the experience of being a Morro Bay person and living here is so valuable that why wait? So I sold my house in Marin and I moved down here and now I live here full-time, which I've been here full-time since October of 2016. So I mentioned the word "experience." Well, my entire career, starting at Apple, was all about inventing this new way of thinking about products and services. It's called experience design. How do you take all the stakeholders of a product, of a service, of a town and start to understand what does everybody need? How do those needs combine? It's not just who makes the money and who pays the money. It's all the touchpoints of the town. It's, does the bathroom work? As well as, did we see the otters today? It's how, the total experience. This is why people pay more for a Macintosh than they do for a PC. And we now live, 30 years after we started this idea at Apple, we now live in an experience economy. An experience economy is where you, people will pay more for meaning and memory. They will pay more for that and they will tell their friends about it through word-of-mouth marketing on social media. Old marketing vehicles are dying, even websites are dying, because now it's all about what was the experience that somebody else had that was so meaningful and so memorable that they'll tell everybody else about it. So, over the last 30 years, that's become my expertise, is how do you build these experiences? How do you research it? How do you create them? And I think the tourism board has, the staff has done a fantastic job and the new strategy that's being put in place is tremendous fertile ground to now start to say, "Morro Bay is a great experience." How do we make sure other people know about it?
Great, thank you very much. And Mr. Kernet? Sharing two mics, sorry.
Is that close enough? My name's Jim Kernet and I'm a new resident to Morro Bay. Moved in about nine or 10 months ago. I went to high school in Aurora Grande. I was actually junior high and high school in Aurora Grande, then I moved to Santa Barbara and went to college there and became a, created a job for myself and it was concerts, lectures and social event chairman. So I did that for seven years and that included promoting concerts from 900 seats to 25,000 seats. After that, my wife and I decided to move to Los Angeles for two years. 30 years later, I moved up here. So, in that 30 years, I went to work for a newspaper. I was handling a lot of advertising, promotion for a number of events, nonprofit events, Manhattan Beach Ed Foundation, Hermosa Beach Ed Foundation, Redondo Beach Ed Foundation, Chambers of Commerce, slew of events that, of all different kinds. So my background basically is promotion and production, but mostly for this tourism would be the promotion. And I agree with the woman down there, is how things have changed. When I started at the newspaper, newspapers were very viable and in the last five years, newspapers are not viable. Our circulation was 65,000, home delivery as a weekly paper, home delivery into three beach cities. But lo and behold, the digital age came about and our company, it was owned 105 newspapers across the country and they, the name became Digital First and that's what they pushed, was search engines, Twitter, I mean, all the, and that's where kids are going, or people are going. I'm not saying kids, but younger people are, they're not looking at newspapers anymore. They're not looking at television. They're not looking, listening to radio so much. So those are all dying formats. What they're doing is looking on their smartphones and their tablets and that's how they find things. And I think the Twitter feeds and the Facebook and the Instagram, that's where you're gonna drive traffic to come up here, because if someone's staying at a hotel in Morro Bay and they're having a great time, they're gonna be sending that out to 250 or 300 of their contacts and I think that generates traffic.
Thank you and welcome back, Ms. Vincent. Becoming good friends here.
So the reason that I'm signing or joining or hoping to join this, the tourism, I feel very, very passionate about this. I've lived here the last five years. I worked at the Madonna Inn at the spa. I understand how it's an experience now. I'm trying to create that in my own business on the waterfront. I want to allow all of the businesses in Morro Bay to work with each other so that we can, everybody makes money in this scenario. Everybody gets a good experience, everybody gets a good memory and we have so many wonderful things, but people, we're not so much of a community anymore. So I wanted to helpful, hopefully, branch out from Main Street businesses to the Embarco businesses to the residents so that everybody knows, "Oh, we have this new business coming in and this is what they're gonna do for the community and, oh, there's a new bakery coming in. We have guests at the hotels. Maybe we can do cross-promotion this way." You know, we get all of our pastries from local. Everything's local, everything's farm-to-fresh-to-table. Our wines are from here. Maybe there's a way of incorporating and elevating everybody's lives to make them happy and have this wonderful experience. Like I was walking down the street and I said hi and somebody said hi back. You know, I'm from a big city, people don't do that. But here, they do and that's something that people take home with them and really appreciate. And one of the memorable things about coming to Morro Bay is not only the visual beauty, but the niceness of everybody. And so I wanted to, not only to have the hotels work with the smaller businesses, but, you know, us bring traffic into the hotels. There's amazing boutique hotels that people don't even know about, but through cross-promotion, everybody can help everybody and I am definitely an advocate for that. I work very closely in Avila. I work very, very closely in Pismo Beach. I work there personally as well as with other small business owners in that regard. So I'm hoping to share my experiences and my knowledge and hopefully my kindness and friendliness.
Good, thank you. And Mr. Kernet, I'm feeling somewhat of a living anachronism, liking to read my newspaper in the morning with my cup of coffee. However, I do have my iPhone, Ms. Dickinson, next to me, so that if I want to do that, I can do it and when I'm away, it certainly comes in handy. That's just a little side note to kind of get you guys to feel a little calmer. And we're gonna start with councilmember Davis and I think you've probably answered all our questions, but I'm just gonna go ahead. Councilmember Davis, if we can start with Ms. Dickinson first, that'd be great. Your question, sir?
Okay, my question is, what is your position on moving vacation rentals and RV parks into the T-Bid?
It's critical to, it's critical for many reasons to increase revenue, but because of my background, what I start to think of is, okay, if we want to influence somebody to say, "Okay, I had a vacation rental that I now have to pay these taxes on, how do I do it?" Right? We have to entice them, say, "What are they gonna get back?" We have to talk about what is going to be the taxes, how those taxes are gonna be spent and then what's gonna be returned for those taxes. The way to influence people is to first think, "What's in it for them? How do I make it all about them, not about me?" Right? Not about the outcome, but what is gonna be the motivation to get them to work with us and to get them to understand why the money is being put where it is and what it's gonna do for them. That's the money that's required to create, to take an already great experience here at Morro Bay and make it even greater, so that more people come and more people come. And as a result of that, their rentals are always full.
Great, thank you. Mr. Green, sir?
I very much agree with a lot of what the, a lot of what you've said and I think that showing value is a big part of bringing vacation rentals into this potential bid. The hoteliers are tasked with a huge burden, kind of carrying the city in so many ways and I totally understand any kind of, any animosity that would exist on hoteliers' behalf as a result of feeling this burden. That said, it is important to show value to these vacation rental owners, first by establishing their credibility in general by grandfathering or somehow sticking with our existing vacation rental permit system. We do have, planning department has moved pretty far along in this process and has the shell of a pretty good vacation rental permit system, with the exception of a couple minor issues. But establishing the permanence of those permits, I think will go a long way to reducing some level of animosity. The 3% bid amount is another contentious aspect of the bid in general, because it is one of the highest bids in the area. Perhaps if vacation rentals get brought into the program, that number goes down to a different amount, let's say 1.5 or 2%. I also think there's an opportunity, one of the finance candidates brought up the example of someone going to the grocery store or Ace and buying something and generating a dollar off of their $150 purchase. It's a business improvement district, so I do think that there's opportunities for other retailers, restaurants, et cetera, to somehow contribute.
Great, thank you. Ms. Solu?
Sorry, I have to wedge a microphone over this way. Okay, so I'm likely the only one who has ever sat on a formation committee for a bid that's sitting up here and I know the community steps that it takes and the involvement that it takes to first get an eyebrow raised and get some interest from the vacation rentals. You do have to show value to them. They must be interested in it. I, as a hotelier, former hotelier, as a person with a hotel hat on, would say too that I have spoken out about my personal unwillingness. The revenue is there to swallow the vacation rentals into the ordinance and all of you are probably aware of that, just by looking at the numbers. But is that the right thing to do? It's always been my contention that that is not the right thing to do, that people should not be dragged into something unwillingly. That people should not be dragged into something unwillingly, but they should be, a plan should be put into place that shows them the great value that they can receive. And if they buy into that plan, they'll come along and they'll be more helpful to you. And you will be able to grow the entire community revenue more than you think you will do if you just drag them in. The other thing, and so part of that comes with the city's reputation management. How has the city managed its reputation in terms of the T-Bid revenue so that the vacation rentals aren't saying, well, there's already animosity between the hotels and the city, why should we jump into? That's reputation management, and that can also be handled by your bid board. I would say to you that if you were really serious about looking at putting vacation rentals and possibly RV parks, in which I would say probably no to RV parks because they're surrounded by state parks, which don't even collect TOT, by the way, if you were really serious about looking at involving those two groups. Heavy outreach should be done, and then the entire bid should be restructured from a 1989 bid into the 1994 Act, which creates a wider, a broader sunset window, possibly five years. You can set the parameters. I mean, San Diego has 20 years. So look at, I think the entire body and scope, if you're going to look at vacation rentals and talk about value to them, their interest and reputation management and how we can bring everyone in, then the entire structure needs to be looked at. And we need to look at stepping that through correctly.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Vincent?
So I was thinking that it would probably be, as everyone has said, to entice people. People don't want to do anything for free. So maybe if we do have the vacation homes and the RV parks put into play, maybe we could work out a cross-promotion system where if they use a laundromat here to wash their linens, if they send their guests to our hotels, if they work a deal out amongst them, they get a certain amount of points that they can use versus their property taxes. So it gives them a discount for, incentive for them to do business here, to bring more business. And it also puts the money back into our city. So even if they're not spending it just at that home, they're spending it at our grocery stores, our laundromats, our day spas, whatever.
Thank you. Mr. Kernett?
It's, that's an interesting question in terms of how to get a homeowner to sign in for vacation rental and give them a percentage, or give the city a percentage. Living down in the South Bay, I was surrounded by Airbnbs. And it was, the cities down there were having a serious problem of what, how to deal with it. Here, I'm not sure what the parameters are, but I know on my street, I've got about four of them right now. And it does create problems with parking, which has been brought up. And it's, I don't know where those funds would go. If you collect money in the TOT, can that go to street maintenance? Maybe. Because I know on my street, for instance, it's not in good condition. There's a lot of places where I feel that the city should step in. I don't know if the collecting money off of these vacation rentals is going to help that. But, and I don't know exactly if we could help the homeowner promote their vacation rental because I think most of those come off digital, online, you know, going online and finding the house and going that way. I don't know how you guys control it. And I know down in the South Bay, they were having serious problems and it kept getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back to decide how they were going to deal with it.
Sounds familiar, is correct. Okay, thank you. We'll go to Councilmember McPherson, and this time we'll start with Mr. Green.
Okay.
Oh, we started with you last time, didn't we? And we'll start.
No, we started with you.
Oh, I'm right, okay, thanks. I knew I was right. I was just checking, Councilmember McPherson.
Right.
Thank you.
Just to see if I was listening, right?
You got it.
Okay. I am. Here's my question. What changes or improvements do you think the city needs to make to ensure that tourists who visit here once want to come back?
That's a good question. I do own a vacation rental myself, and lots of return visitors who are over 60, who have been coming for, since they were kids. And I'm a little bit nervous that that's not going to continue because I can, I live right downtown and I can go entire days where I don't see a kid. And it's kind of amazing. So with, with a straight face, I can't tell my friends in other cities that Morro Bay is a great place to bring their young families. And so I think that that, number one, is what we need to focus on. Our new strategic plan and our recent marketing efforts have been attempting to push that notion a little bit more. But my big concern is that we just don't have a feature or multiple features that make that, that back that marketing up. Our biggest asset is the waterfront and ideally having a continuous pathway along the waterfront. But in terms of kids, there needs to be interactivity. There needs to be learning centers, touch tanks. You know, there's, really, that just needs to be the focus, I think, is this youth tourism market, especially on the higher end, the young professional market. And, you know, we've had a couple Planning Commission reviews of recent hotels and like boutique hotel conversion of a few rooms here and there. And that is, that is the direction of increasing tourism dollars to these young professionals who want to stay in these niche boutique-type places as well as Airbnbs. So there may also be an opportunity to upgrade some existing hotel infrastructure or encouraging that through some sort of incentive program. But yes, I think the focus really needs to be that young professional and their children.
Thank you. Ms. Solu?
Councilmember McPherson, would you mind repeating your question for me, please?
What changes or improvements does the city need to make to ensure that tourists who visit once, visit here the first time, want to come back? And I do have to preface that by saying that I have a friend, a former friend who, and she is a former friend because I knew her in Minnesota. And when I moved here, I called her up in Berkeley and I said, Bonnie, do you want to, you and Jack should come down and visit me. And she said, quote, "Why? I've been there."
Well, Ms. McPherson, you should make that call again. Here's what I see about Morro Bay. I think that Morro Bay is a visually stunning place naturally. I see that our human-built structures can sometimes be lost in our natural surroundings. And some of those include some city infrastructure issues that we may have. I think that, I think that you all know how beautiful California is and you've seen the California marketing for the California dream. California is selling a lifestyle. Morro Bay is selling a lifestyle. It is, there is no reason why we cannot sell multiple styles of life. We host Amgen. We are selling a bicycle lifestyle. We host boat regattas. We are selling a sailing lifestyle. We host pedestrian-friendly trails. We are selling a pedestrian-friendly lifestyle. We have almost zero franchised or large-scale restaurants in Morro Bay. We are host to many family-owned businesses where you can walk in and meet the proprietor. We are selling a small-town lifestyle. It is about lifestyle and experience. It is about what we can do. I walk on the Embarcadero almost every day. I walk probably four or five miles in our city. And here's what I see. Today, I was walking along the Embarcadero and I counted five crosswalks. All five crosswalks needed repainting. And as I walked through all five, I thought, that one should be a hopscotch. That one should be a big twister when we're talking about a big twister game in the crosswalk, you know, where you spin on one side and you get yellow dots and you have to hop across the yellow dots all the way across. The next one over should be a bunch of different goldfish. I think that we have opportunity in small ways to create fun, to create that lifestyle moment. And I think we should be using some of the $150,000 of general fund money to do that. I think we should be able to use some of that money to create spaces and places that create experience and lifestyle, not only for our tourists, but also for us as residents.
Thank you. And, Ms. Vincent?
So this is something I've thought about a lot. And I think that, as I've said many times before, we really need to aim on younger generations. We need something for the children. We do have access to that water that with the aquarium that was shut down. We could turn that into a water park for small children. And then have hire, you know, lifeguards from our own community, give community jobs, and have them do day camps or do day camps during the summer where children can be doing busy and activities and that their parents can actually relax and do that. So it, really focusing on being a family-dominated tourist thing. Also, I think we should do concerts. People love to spend money to go see their artist or their band that they love. And we have the most picturesque place that we could do this. Avila does it right on the water. Why can't we? There's, you know, so many different things. We could have like an adult arcade, like Dave and Buster's. There's all kinds of things that we could do to generate money where it's not just eating sweets, eating seafood, and, you know, shopping. We need to do more interactive things for our children, for the parents to enjoy doing these activities with their children. It doesn't need to be segregated. Also, really including the hotels and the small businesses in these things. Having us be there to sponsor it, having our, you know, our barbecue place have a truck selling their, you know, their food at these concerts, making money doing this. Having local bands and, I mean, just look what happened with the siren. The siren's amazing. People come from everywhere. Everybody talks about the siren. And that's because we were bringing flair from LA to our town. It's still totally our town, but it's our twist on it. So I think that there's many different things that we could do. I mean, we can look at other places that are booming like Avila and Pismo with what they're doing and addition to what has worked for 100 years in, you know, up north a little bit with a boardwalk and activities for kids and things like that.
Mr. Kernett?
I think the main thing is to look for events that people would come to. Then they will come back. All the people, all my contacts or friends down in the South Bay, I tell them I moved to Morro Bay. I retired. Oh, you're so lucky. That is so beautiful up there. We love that. And I sit there and I post pictures, put it on my Facebook or put it on my Instagram, and they're all commenting. But looking at the city website and seeing what activities you've got coming in, you've got Amgen, you've got, well, obviously, the beaches are a draw. Shopping is a draw. You've got the Pirate Parade. I think, I think you might have some wine tours. I'm not sure. You have mine walks, the Kite Festival, a car show, 4th of July. I think what you need to do is expand those and have more and look at other cities and what they've come up with. There can be nonprofit walks that people don't, the monies, the participants, let's say, pay an entrance fee of $25 and that money is donated to an educational foundation in this area, to the high school, to do, I mean, I've seen amazing things develop down in Hermosa and Manhattan Beach that way. And I think for the hotels, if you, their slow season, there's going to be X months where they're very slow. I think that's what you need to focus in and put the events in those months. And because, you know, May to August, the hotels are pretty much full on the weekends. So, just some ideas.
Ms. Dickinson?
Last week, I walked into the Buttercup Bakery and I saw this really stylishly dressed couple with a three-year-old. And they had cameras around their necks. And I said, excuse me, I may be talking to the Tourism Board and I'm wondering why you're here? And they said, everything else is bland. We come to Morro Bay. It's a little rough around the edges, but it's so unique. And we come back here as often as we can from Silicon Valley. I said, is that your Tesla out front? Yeah, that's our Tesla, right? I said, so why do you come back so often? And where do you stay? They said, we're staying at the Estero Inn. I said, mm, nice, nice. And I said, well, where do you like to eat? Oh, we love dockside because we can look over and see the otters here. I said to them, so you really, you wouldn't, what would you change? They said, just make it a little shinier. Just spiff it up a little. Don't bring in any Starbucks. We don't want to see any Starbucks here. And I said, thank you. This is a great experience here. It's a unique experience here. It's not about copying what other people are doing, although I think many of the ideas that everyone, have great ideas, but do it in Morro Bay's way. And promote, battle the bland. Be unique. Be yourself. Embrace an industrial past that now is going into the future with potential renewable energies. Embrace becoming, you know, a county and next to a city that has the most aggressive carbon-neutral objective in the country. You know, let's bring in the families that are driving the Teslas that stay at high-end hotels and want unique boutique experiences and don't want Starbucks.
No Starbucks, got it.
No Starbucks, except in Albertson's.
You're okay. You're okay.
Starbucks for locals only.
Mr. Green? Did we start with you? You're done.
I started that one.
Yeah, you did. Okay, that's great. Okay, all right. We'll go to Councilmember Heller. Thank you. I thought so. I had my, I'm just checking on you.
I want to thank you all for applying. And I want to ask the mayor if we could expand the number of people we can put on this committee because I would choose all five of you.
I know.
I just really like what I'm hearing.
And on that note, and on that note, if I, I mean, I agree. I think that, and I'd be happy to work as a volunteer as well, so.
We can probably accommodate that wish.
This is on, this is on TV, by the way. We just want you to know. It's captured for life.
I'm committed for life.
All right, and we'll start with, let's see.
That was not a question. Let me post my question. That was a comment.
We're starting with Ms. Vincent.
So my question is this. A lot of things have been talked about, but if you had a magic wand and you could do one thing to make Morro Bay more financially sustainable over time as a tourist town, what would that be?
Starting with Ms. Vincent.
If I had a magic wand, what I would do is accentuate all of the lovely architecture that we have by repainting, but keeping the different buildings, the, just as she said, shining it up. Just really focusing on the history, putting placards around about the original businesses, why Morro Bay is so interesting and cool, what was here, why it's still a fishing village, be very educational, as well as putting lots of flowers and planting a lot of trees and making it very visually appealing to the eye. So people would think, ooh, this reminds me of Carmel, but it's so unique and eclectic.
Mr. Kernett?
I think probably is not to change too much in terms of the uniqueness of Morro Bay. I know when I was moving up here, I've got family over in Atascadero. And I was asking my nephew, I said, what about those stacks and that? He goes, I said, why wouldn't the city take those down? He goes, oh, no, no, no. Those are historical monuments. It's, don't you understand? It's three- don't you understand? It's three stacks and a rock. He goes, that's what Morro Bay is all about. So if there was one thing, I just think it's getting the word out to people. And that's it, doing that online digitally, getting it out that way. Because you need to open up the, the network. You need to open up your customer base. Because I don't see anything wrong with this city, to be honest with you. And I've lived in a number of cities and I've lived in places that had bad parking. And parking here is difficult, but it's not something that can't be worked on. So I just think, you just need to get the city out there and have events that appeal to, like your woman said, driving the Tesla, you know, having them come in that will spend money. I know I've spent a lot of time coming up here when I was having my house remodeled. And there's a number of hotels, motels that I really liked. So you've got the, you've got the occup, you've got the rooms. It's just getting the people into them.
Ms. Dickinson.
Well, I want to agree with Ms. Vincent because I, I feel that, boy, you know, being somebody, I mean, I was the head, the SVP of all design and marketing for eBay for seven years, you know, and it's hard to be a retailer, right? But there's a lot that we can do to help the businesses in Morro Bay to get a lot more savvy about how to run their businesses and their, and be these unique retailers. And at the same time, do other things to really help them to be successful. And, and to incent them and potentially even sponsor them in ways that can make them, to keep them unique and make them more successful. That's going to really help everybody. But just one little thing I personally concerned about is Morro Bay is a more dog-friendly town than Carmel and more accessible and more friendly. And, and I think we all need to support the Trust for Public Lands and the potential acquisition of the Dog Beach. That's going to be a tough project. But there's so many people I've talked to that are tourists here that come here, their meaning and memory comes from, I bring my dog here and we run on that beach. And if that beach goes away, why am I coming here? Right? So I think that's something that we need to keep an eye on is that Chevron land is, is sold. We need to start really getting involved with that.
Mr. Green.
I'm going to say something that might be a little bit contrarian. I, I think we pat ourselves on the back a little bit too much about how great this place is and how nice everybody is, to be honest. And, and you know what? I think we get sometimes, I'm, why I say that is this doesn't address the people in this room. They're, no, no, I, I, this is going somewhere, I promise.
Apropos, apropos.
I, I promise. Really. Yeah, I'm going to dig out of it. All right. I really think there's about 50 to 100 people making this city go. And those are the people with smiles on their faces. And those are the people who are contributing to committees. And those are the people who are up here interviewing. And we sometimes forget that there are a whole lot of neighborhoods that have six-foot-tall front fences with plus hedge. We have a whole lot of businesses that have nasty no-parking signs. We have people calling in code enforcement left and right for really benign things. And I really think that there's a cultural change that when, anytime I bring this up and I talk to people that have lived in Morro Bay for a really long time, they say, good luck. But I, I really think that there's an opportunity to encourage people who want to participate to actually find roles for them. Because inevitably, what happens is people say, you know, I want to help out. You interview for a position or whatever, you get it, you don't, and then what? It's really difficult to, to find opportunities for good people to do good things. And so I really think that there's, what, what that looks like, I can't say for sure. But even have any, some sort of friendlier, less municipal, a public comment opportunity to various advisory boards. So it doesn't gets so three hours into a meeting type, type vibe where it just discourages participation. So I think just encouraging good people to do good things is a cultural thing that, that will just pay dividends in the long run.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Solu.
Thank you. Thank you very much. See how helpful and friendly people are here? I just want to say that there, there is no magic wand. What there are is a lot of magic people in our town who group together in small ways or group together in big ways to get things done. Some of the big things that they do is get the avocado margarita festival done. Some of the big things that they do is put on the Jogathon at Delmar School. And it might not be big in your circle, but it's big in theirs. And that makes us, makes our community bond so much better. I can tell you that over the years, we've been privileged enough to have five successful businesses here. And we have renovated and restored several hotel properties within the footprint of where they were and how the neighborhood was. And every time we would go into escrow on a hotel, and I would think we were close, I would start the process. And the process involves a lot of detail. And that detail would start with me walking by the hotel at sunrise, walking by the hotel in the middle of the day, walking on the street in front of the hotel, all the way around the hotel, across the street from the hotel, driving up on it at different times of day and night, 11 o'clock at night, what does the lightscape look like? Is it a down, or is it downlighting, uplighting? What could be improved? How does that hotel fit into the surrounding neighborhood? How, how does it affect the surrounding neighborhood when you're approaching it, when you're leaving it? What does it feel like? And that's also my approach to our community. What does it feel like as I'm approaching it? I can tell you that I spent 40 days away from here in a place that I would never want to send anyone. It was not jail. But when we drove back into town and we got off of Morro Bay Boulevard and we could see, we could see Morro Rock for the first time, that was one of the sweetest approaches I've ever seen in my life. And I think that we can make that experience not, we can make that experience happen in, in small and meaningful ways. And if I had a magic wand, I would make everybody who saw that rock, which is our number one tourist attraction, because we know that the beach and the rock are our number one tourist attraction, even if it may be very brief. They are the number one. And if we could make everybody see that with magic eyes instead of a magic wand, if we can use that to catapult our economy in a meaningful way that fits into our community, that's how we should do it.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis, you are up. And I'm going to flip the cards around a little bit. And I'm going to start with Mr. Green. I'm flipping the cards around. I'm going to go the other way this time, too.
Okay. So what do you see as the nexus between tourism and living wage jobs? And how do you see Tbid influencing more living wage jobs for Morro Bay?
I haven't thought too much about this, but I did see a stat recently when I was looking at the, so there's the new development for an 83-room hotel that was, it's kind of pitched through Planning Commission over by Tascadero Road and the high school. And it's really interesting. And it's early in this, in the stage and Planning Commission's kind of shepherding it along. And, you know, we'll see what happens. But I was, and one of the things that the developer was, was kind of promising was, you know, X number of jobs. I don't think there was a fixed number, but, you know, growth, development, jobs. But I, I looked it up and tourism jobs are, tourism-related jobs are a lot less than you would think as a result of either new, new developments or even tourism in general. So I, I think that this is, it's a tricky thing for Tbid to be addressing, I really think, because it's, you know, hoteliers are driving heads to bed, heads in beds. It may be more of the responsibility outside of this board to, to encourage any kind of private enterprise developing. I forgot to mention on the magic wand, you know, certainly moving the diner G plan along or getting, or backing it down even below that, you know, even if we bring in small businesses that have five or six employees, it's still going to be beneficial. Hiring local, all we can do is encourage people to hire local. People are going to hire who they know. So yeah, I, I just think that though it's not really the responsibility of this board, I do think that anyone who is on an advisory board should be encouraged, if not required, to at least attend one other advisory board meeting, just so that you have some idea what's going on in, let's say, public works or parks or whatever it is. And just so that every board has a little bit better understanding of what the other boards do, because we kind of tend to operate in a vacuum. And was part of the reason why I don't really have a great answer for this one.
Ms. Dickinson.
There are two ways that companies strategize revenue increases. One is being the differentiator and the other is being the low-cost leader so that you undercut your competition. When I heard the strategy plan in your meeting, I think not the last one, but the one, week before, the month before, I heard that, I was surprised to hear that our hotels are considered the low-cost leaders. That's because we're not differentiating our offer enough. And, and the other thing that anyone knows that builds like a hotel.com or one of those is that you, you work off of the principle of scarcity. If people feel that something's becoming a scarce resource, they want more of it and they'll pay more for it. That's why you get that. When you're on Expedia or hotels.com and you see that 35 people are looking at this right now and there's two rooms left, boom, motivates through the principle of scarcity, I'll pay more for that because I want to make sure I get it, right? These are all things, it's a little chicken and egg. It's hard. How do you, how do you get the money to make your offering different than anybody else in the area? We're competing with Santa Cruz. We're competing with Avila. We're competing with every other little town. We're different already. But how do we make ourselves different in the way that the more high-cost, more luxury, more boutique experience will pay for this? So as you said, it's chicken and egg. How, what do you start? What do you incent? What do you sponsor? What do you invest in to get yourself differentiated? And then how does that help to create scarcity, which raises wages, which brings in higher revenue? It's, it's a virtuous circle that you have to create, right? And often it is leadership that finds the investment, finds the grants, finds the way to get that differentiation going. And then the other things start to follow. And wages follow all the, all of that. The wages don't go up until the other issues are addressed.
Mr. Kernett.
I think that's a very difficult one to, to get wages up because people are, businesses in general are going to, they're, they're looking at the bottom line. If their business goes up, they want that profit. I mean, you look at most, a lot of these hotels around here, I mean, at least I've gone in, you know, the ones I've frequented, there's a lot of owners working the hotel. They don't have very many employees, if any. I mean, they have obviously cleaning staff. But I don't, even though those jobs are in demand, the wage is going to stay, is low, and I don't see it going up. I've got a nephew working down in San Luis Obispo at a restaurant, and he's making $10 an hour. And I said, so I said, why don't you, I said, you've worked there three years. You know how to cook. I said, why don't you just go to a higher-end restaurant and make more money? You can get 15 bucks an hour somewhere. He goes, no, I like the owner. The owner is very nice to me. So it's just, it's difficult. And this city's hard to, you know, it's very expensive to live in. Rentals are hard. College students can't, you know, they can't afford rentals here. I mean, it's just California's that way. So as far as getting the lower end income up, I don't think it's going to trickle down by getting the business up until, I think it's probably going to take a state mandate that minimum wage is X, because I don't see it happening gratis from a business owner. But I'm not a business owner, so I just.
Ms. Vincent.
So I have two separate things that I wanted to acknowledge on this. There's, so I'm in the beauty industry. And there is a corporation, they're called Solana Salons. I don't know if you've heard of them. But they just take a big building and they make small rooms and you can use it for whatever you want. We have a lot of buildings down here that we could convert into studio apartments for colleges. We could work with Cal Poly in that direction. We could work with Cuesta. There's also, the new way to work is to be nomadic. I have a lot of friends that live overseas that work for American companies and they just travel and all the time. So we could take one of our buildings and redo it, well, repurpose it in a way that somebody could rent an office for a week or two weeks or three weeks, or have a small business from somewhere. If we can create an incentive program for new developing things that are really big, the arts are huge. If we could put in a recording studio, we could get money from LA. We can get money from New York. We could get money from San Francisco. If there's new things that we can do, if we look culturally, what is bringing in money to other areas, we can twist it our way, repurpose our buildings, and then have that revenue from that.
Thank you. Ms. Solu.
Thank you, thank you. Good question, Don. I can tell you that there is a direct correlation between, between having a high-end hotel with a higher gross revenue or a higher ADR, as we commonly refer to it, average daily rate, than, in wages, they directly correlate, than having a hotel with a lower average rate. So if we, as a Tbid board, if I'm fortunate enough to be selected, could drive the average daily rate up, there is a trickle-down economic effect to the wage earner. And I can say that from experience. I've owned several boutique hotels here, the last one being the conversion of the Embarcadero Inn. With that property, we had three head-of-household jobs. And we had two other managers that were making upward, I can't really expose that, but a very solid, close-to job wage. We were also fortunate enough to be able to provide our employees with one week of paid vacation after one year, two weeks of paid vacation after two years. They were also, if we made our margins, they were given a bonus every month based on the margin that we made and profit sharing. Plus, after a year, if they were 21, they could participate in a 401K plan. And that was because there was a direct correlation between raising the average daily rate of the rented hotel room with what we could provide to our employees. There is a direct correlation. And the other thing that helps to put pressure on wages is a low unemployment rate. And we, in Morro Bay, have one of the lowest unemployment rates in the county. If you, I'm a former HR director, and if you have an unemployment rate that's between 3% and 4%, which is where we're at, you virtually have zero unemployment because you have about 4%, pardon me, 4% of your workforce at any given time are in transition into another job. So they're in transition back to school or they're in transition to another job. So that very low unemployment rate allows the employee to really strongly negotiate for a solid wage. So, thank you.
I was going to forego my question, but this is such a great panel. I can't. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm going to stay and ask it. Sorry, guys. You know, I know you're wanting to get up here. But, but, but here's, here's my question. If you look at the, the average price point in terms of purchase between Morro Bay and Carmel, the differential is approximately a fourfold increase in the average price point purchase in Carmel versus Morro Bay. So that's, that's a fact. Part of that may be due to the quality of product available in Carmel versus Morro Bay. Part of that may be due to the quality of consumer and the disposable income spend available for that individual. How would you go about improving the price point by improving the quality or quantity of spend and the quality and quantity of consumer? improving the quality or quantity of spend, and the quality and quantity of consumer?
I start?
Well, you've got the mic, you bet.
I'm on, I'm on.
Absolutely.
I think you've hit on, that's the $10,000 question, you know? And you can see it from, I think it almost pulls, that question pulls together almost everything that we've been talking about tonight, which is, is how do we move from low-cost leader to differentiated offering, right? How do we go from being a town that's so unique, and has so many of the unique qualities, that Carmel has been able to take and polish up, and make like so, almost like a little fairyland of uniqueness there, right? We're not, we are more the real working harbor with an industrial past that we're proud of, and that we're moving forward, and we have our own story to tell. But I think that there's also, we need to tell that story better, and then we need to make sure that we're upgrading some of our infrastructure, so that when people come, they're like, "This is this cool industrial working harbor with an industrial past that I just love this place. This is a maker space here. This is where people worked hard and built things, and I feel comfortable here." You know, we can have our very own different story. Carmel was started as an arts colony, and then it got, and then it brought in golf, and it brought in all these higher-end activities that had people stay there, right? What's our equivalence of that? We don't want to copy that. We want to take what we are and extend the story to something that really resonates with those people I met, like, drove down from Silicon Valley. And we want, we want people to come that connect with the power of our history. And then we have to find our version of being Crosby. Maybe it's Elon Musk.
Iron Man.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kurnett. Mr. Kurnett, sorry.
That is an admirable attempt to go up four times, I think, in a short period of time. I don't think, it's going to take a lot of work to get Morro Bay to, I mean, well, first off, you don't have the population with the income adjacent to Morro Bay that Carmel does. It's a, what, hour drive from San Francisco, hour drive from San Jose, something. I mean, that's where the income levels are so high, that they can afford, they can go to a hotel, they can go to a restaurant, and they can spend $300, $400 a day and not worry about it. Here, it's a pretty good trek, either from Santa Barbara, from Ventura. I mean, there's not too much north of here that is easy to get down to. But I think it's just a matter of what's adjacent to the city as far as income levels. I mean, I've watched, since I grew up, I watched this city grow, Aurora Grande grow, Pismo Beach. All those cities have definitely changed, and the income, I mean, the money that has come in to all these cities has driven the prices up on everything. So in terms of being four times, I'm sure, a house I was living in, in Hermosa Beach, that originally started at $54,000, ended up at $2.5 million. So that's, that, one of the realtors I worked with for many, many years said, "There's, the Lord only made so much beachfront property, and that's where it's going to go up." And that's what we've got here, is beachfront property. So prices are going up, the hotels, you know, they can charge more because it's a good location. I mean, that's...
Thank you. Ms. Vincent.
So, for me, the way that I'm going to answer this is that, I'm from Del Mar in San Diego. I grew up with, I mean, I was not a student in any means, but I grew up in Del Mar. I've seen Carmel, they look very similar. Morro Bay does not look like that. Morro Bay is not clean enough to look like that. We do not have the visual appeal that those cities have. We also do not have the bougie stores that they have. We don't offer anything that is high-end exclusive to our area. There's, I mean, I worked at the Madonna Inn for a long time. The Madonna Inn is this huge entity, and people, San Luis Obispo, Madonna Inn, immediately they go there. People who don't even stay there go and spend a couple hundred dollars there to use the spa, or the pool, or, you know, to go in and check out the trinkets. We don't have anything like that here. When you go to Carmel, you, there's tons of shopping and eating, and it's very luxurious. And the reason why it doesn't quite make sense, because we are on Highway 1, we should be getting Highway 1 money, but we do not have the same quality of food as, like, Napa Sonoma. We do not have the same wines as Napa Sonoma. We send people to Paso Robles on wine tours. We don't bring them here to do this. We should have everything that we're doing here, to going back into our businesses and selling, what amazing place this is. If we could clean up and make it look very similar to it. But until the time that we can provide a luxurious experience, we're not going to attract that kind of money.
Ms. Solu.
Wow, okay. So with that question, so much is swirling through my head. And it's hard to get it all out in one minute, but I'll say this to you. Please try and remember my comment to you in a previous question about, "It's in the approach." When I, when we were in escrow and looking to purchase a hotel, the other thing that, part of my team task, my job, is the marketing side of the business. One of the things that I would do is sit down and look at every review posted all the way back for that hotel. Every review, good or bad, I would eat it like a piece of pizza and absorb it, and look at how to get the reputation management up. It was always our personal goal to grow the business. In order to do that, our goal was to get whatever hotel we had into the top 2% on TripAdvisor, Expedia, and Booking.com on reputation management. Why is that? Because when we spend marketing dollars from our marketing department, we know that if you don't show up above the fold on the page, 90% of taps and responses happen above the fold on the webpage. The rest of the businesses share the remaining 10%, and the businesses, the five businesses below that fold, of those five, they get 90% of the 10%. So look at where you're at, and know how far you have to go. So I think we can't compare grapes and apples, and I think we're an apple, because Morro Bay is the apple of my eye. So I think that Morro Bay has a unique and distinct product. It wasn't a surprise to me, one day, to pull up to the hotel and see a Malback parked in the parking lot. Was never a surprise for me to see a Lamborghini, a Lotus. It was never a surprise for me to see that, because that's who I was marketing to. I think you're only surprised by that if that's not your goal. I think you will never achieve your goal if you don't state your goal, if you don't write your goal down, and if you don't believe in your goal. And in order for you to reach that goal of having 400 times growth, you need to say, "I'm going to do that." You need to ask yourself if that's achievable, and then, once you believe it's achievable, whatever your goal is, you need to commit to it. And I tell my boys that all the time. If it's your goal on a skateboard to drop in off a two-story building, if you're going to do it, don't do it halfway. Commit yourself to it. Otherwise, you're not going to succeed. And I've raised four sons with only four trips to the emergency room.
Mr. Green, we'll end with you.
All right. To start from a marketing perspective, just really quickly, I do think that we need to do a better job of calling ourselves the starting point or ending point of the Highway 1 trip. Second of all, I think we need to do a better job. SlowCal is doing a very nice job countywide, and we are here, too, in our tourism department. I agree with many of the things that Ms. Vincent said. I do actually believe that we need to bring people into Morro Bay, to have Morro Bay be the tourist capital of SlowCal, but let people wander freely outside of, because we don't have the infrastructure or entertainment to sustain a week-long vacation. So it's perfectly fine to me for them to come in here, have this be their home base for a week, and go wherever they want. Regarding Carmel comparisons, from a city planning perspective, there's a lot about us that's a bit of a lost cause. So we can't fight battles that are unwinnable. I mean this, right? So we need to own our weaknesses and be honest about them, rather than pretend they don't exist. It doesn't make sense to me. So if that means utilizing warehouse space, if it means bringing in food trucks, if it means painting murals, I have a student who put together a really great project last quarter, that was basically talking with several artist collectives, as well as some Cal Poly students, just to paint the electrical boxes that are such eyesores, and placed in the weirdest places in our city. And whether or not I am part of this advisory board, I'm thinking about putting together a grant application to write Morro Bay's history, and have that appear on a walkable, signed path all around town. We do have some of that, and I think we do some pretty, pretty good work with signage. But again, it's about being honest with who we are and making the best of it. Magic wands are awesome, but we don't have them.
Wow, you guys are, you guys have been great. Thank you so much for coming out. What a great group of folks, and we really appreciate that. We have a tough decision to make. So, council, this is two vacancies. T-Bid member-at-large filling two four-year terms ending 1/31/23. If you guys will have a seat, our next group will come up, and we'll go ahead and complete it. Thank you again so much for coming out.
Yeah, can I just add one thing?
Go ahead.
No, it's all right, they're done.
Thank you. What was your name?
Nancy.
Nancy.
I'm Alexis.
So nice to know.
I love your ideas.
I think we're going to probably start a committee for the Embarcadero.
All right. I mean, I've been thinking about what I was going to say.
For the business.
These questions are tough, man.
Help out, or be a part of it.
Like, what are you going to do to build a boatyard? I don't know.
Thank you.
What the heck?
Where are you from?
Born and raised here.
Okay. How long have you owned Fireside?
23 years. My parents came over and hated it, and I took it from there.
2016. And 2019, how old?
25.
Right on. Good for you, dude.
So I've been in the hotel industry.
Nice. That's great.
Wait, are you...
Cal Poly, I'm a major in that.
Have you done this before?
No, personally.
What made you want to?
I think it's important as a business owner, especially, to be included, especially in T-Bid.
I had no idea what that was.
We need to re-invest.
All right, all right, all right. Cool.
Thank you.
Jennifer emailed me last week, and I had the dead line. I was like, "Oh, okay." But this does seem like a really good experience and opportunity.
I know, my back is hurting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to try and really be a part of it.
Yes.
Well, truth be told, we've been seeing you a long time.
She does have private, you know, stuff.
You need to come back.
I know. I hear there's a lot of great answers.
All right, good.
But I have all these truckers.
All right, good.
Something like that, maybe having, and adding, or, you know, you can add, the guests can add it on to, so just like they can do the soft, we use strawberries, and it adds on, and then you can, I guess, like, the whole process is really simple, so we just give you their information, and we know what you want to do.
Yes, I will read the votes and then explain the results. Councilmember Addus voted for Ms. Dickinson and Mr. Green. Councilmember Davis voted for Ms. Dickinson and Mr. Green. Councilmember Heller voted for Ms. Dickinson and Ms. Solu. Councilmember McPherson voted for Mr. Green and Ms. Solu. And Mayor Heding voted for Ms. Dickinson and Ms. Solu. And if you were able to track that, Ms. Dickinson received four votes, and she is appointed to fill one of the spots. Mr. Green and Ms. Solu each received three. So I'm going to hand the ballots back to settle the tie.
So what we'll do is, when you get the ballot, you're only voting for one of the two, for either Ms. Solu or Mr. Green. Is that, am I correct? Yes. And you're going to circle the one of those two that you want to vote for. Everybody clear on, good? Okay. Again, Ms. Solu and Mr. Green circling one.
Councilmember Addus voted for Mr. Green. Councilmember Davis voted for Mr. Green. Councilmember Heller voted for Ms. Solu. Councilmember McPherson voted for Ms. Solu, and Mayor Heding voted for Ms. Solu. So Ms. Solu's been appointed to fill the second seat on the T-Bid.
Congratulations to you. Thank you all for an excellent panel, and thank you so much for coming out this evening and spending time. We'll move on to the T-Bid hotelier position. We have one member-at-large, term ending January 31, 2023, and one hotelier with 50 rooms or less, term ending January 31, 2021. And I believe, Madam Clerk, both applicants are, would fill, be able to fill either of the two positions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that is correct. So, gentlemen, welcome. Thank you for waiting this evening and allowing us to have the opportunity to go through everybody else. And I guess we're saving the best for last, right? That's the way we're looking. So, welcome. Appreciate you being here. We're going to start off with questions, but I have to ask you to go ahead and introduce yourselves, and tell us a little bit about why you're interested in being on the T-Bid. Start with Mr. Patel.
Hi, my name's Amish Patel. I...
Welcome.
And I own the Fireside Inn in Morro Bay. I've been here for 23 years, most of my life. My parents... My parents came here in '95 and had bought the Fireside Inn. And around 2016, I took over. I went to San Francisco State University, majored in business administration with an emphasis in marketing. And since I've returned, I've taken the business that my parents had and kind of made it into my own and modernized it, improved it. Thank you.
And welcome, Mr. Su. Glad to have you here. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in the T-Bid?
Yeah, thank you for inviting me. Actually, I'd like to thank Jennifer Little for emailing me and making me aware of this opportunity. Yeah, my mom is the owner of the Embarcadero Inn. She became the owner in March, and I started helping her in September. Yeah, our background's mainly healthcare. My dad was actually an OB-GYN doctor. I actually... I graduated from medical school in Indiana University in 2017, but I decided I didn't want to do medicine. And so I looked for a position that required like an MD, but I guess not... you don't have to actually have a license. And it was... the most common position that came up was financial analyst for like biotech and pharmaceuticals. So I took the CFA Level One exam last June. But my mom started the hotel in March, and then I think one of the front desk agents left. And so she asked me to come up here, help her out. So I came up in like August, September. And I started working with her. I started like mulling a career, like helping her manage the hotel. And so I'm actually studying for my real estate license as well. But other than that, yeah, I've just had a lot of experience working at the front desk. And the reason I do want to join is even though... Well, I think like me and my mom, we have like no experience. We're very new to this industry. But we are like a big contributor to the T-Bid tax, you know, and what the board does affects us greatly. And I think everyone would benefit if we got more involved, connected, aware, knowledgeable. So I think, yeah, that's why I want to join.
Thank you very much, and welcome to you both. We'll start questions with Councilmember Heller, if you would, sir. And Mr. Patel, we'll start with you.
So there are a lot of... first of all, thanks for sticking it out here and being last. I appreciate that. Kind of a long night. So there are a lot of different kinds of rooms and price rooms in Moro Bay. What is your sense of whether the rates in general are underpriced as opposed to being priced perhaps a little bit higher and generating more revenue for everybody?
I do feel that the rooms here in town are...
Closer to the mic, we have TV audience that... yes, thank you.
I do feel the rooms here are underpriced. That might have, I guess, a factor in the hotel years not having much pride in the product and location that they're in. And being able to increase that, I guess, they would have to see, realize the value that the city offers to its guests. And improving the... Moro Bay's lifestyle and brand awareness to each guest that comes to the city so that there are repeat guests and they see a drive-in business and see that, hey, economically, you either improve or die. It's sad truth, but I guess improving the quality and driving guests to come back.
Mr. Su.
So your question's, do you think we should raise rates?
Yes, my question is, is this a race to the bottom competitively, or does it make more sense to raise rates and...
Okay. Yeah, I think we should raise rates. I honestly don't have much experience with rate management. That's something my mom takes care of. But I think personally, for our hotel, compared to the other hotels, we are higher-priced. You know, I think if collectively we all... Like, my mom actually complains about that a lot. She's like, "Oh, like I wanna, you know, charge more, but everyone else's rates is just so low. Like, there's nothing that we can do." And like, I feel like as... us personally, we're at the higher end already. And yeah, I would totally support raising rates, but it's like, that's not something I can do as a single hotel. You know, that's something that we would have to do like collectively as Moro Bay, and I have no idea how you would convince all these other hoteliers to do that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Addis.
I'm actually gonna forego my question.
Okay, great. Councilmember Davis?
Do you think that it will be beneficial to the hotel business overall to increase the number of rooms in Moro Bay? And by increasing the number of rooms, I specifically mean adding more hotels?
Is it me?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Su.
Adding more hotels. I... I don't think we need more hotels. I feel like we're pretty saturated already. Just on Main Street, like, walking, driving through, I feel like it's a whole block of hotels. I don't know. I might be just speaking selfishly, but I feel like more competition wouldn't be good for me and my mom's hotel personally. Yeah, and I do... yeah, I do feel Moro Bay is pretty saturated with hotels already. It's not something... I don't think there's a need for more.
Mr. Patel?
I feel that adding more hotels and more hotel rooms would be beneficial to the city. I don't feel that there would be that much competition that other hotels wouldn't be able to, I guess, be competitive with the newer properties. And especially for the city, it would be a great increase in TOT and T-Bid tax.
Great, thank you. Councilmember McPherson?
Yeah.
Starting with Mr. Patel this time.
Okay. One proposal that has been made, actually a number of years back, and was never followed through on, was that what Moro Bay needs is a hotel with a convention center attached to it. Do you think that would be helpful for the city?
Considering the size and scope, Convention Center would definitely be beneficial. It would drive a lot more clients into the town. It would allow for more, I guess, corporate events, big holdings that would be able to happen in that event center. And the people that come there would be able to get a chance to see Moro Bay and all that offers and provide as an entry point for them to possibly visit again.
Mr. Su?
Yeah, I agree. I think Convention Center would be exciting. Like, I'm from Orange County, so I was pretty close to Anaheim Convention Center. I went to like the Anime Expo. I went to Comic-Con in San Diego. Like, I don't know if we could actually pull something off like that in Moro Bay, but I mean, if that's a possibility, sure, why not?
Yeah, absolutely. Definitely. Great, thank you. And Councilmember Heller? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Davis. Sorry. Started with you, didn't I? That's right. You're done? Okay. Councilmember Addis was the one that we missed. Right, thank you very much. And you skipped, okay. I knew there was one. We were one short on that. Again, thanks for being here. So my question is this. In Moro Bay, once again, it's kind of similar to the question that I asked the other group, quality of product versus quality of consumer. My sense is that, and I maybe heard at least one of you say, we may have a quality of product issue with regard to hotels in Moro Bay. How do we attract a higher-level consumer that has more disposable income to Moro Bay to be able to increase the ADR with the quality of product that we have? Is that possible? And I'll start with Mr. Patel.
I am gonna restate my original that the hoteliers really have to take a part in their product. They have to be able to reinvest and see that investing back into the hotel would be a good ROI for them to help not only increase occupancy, but also be able to drive more people with disposable incomes to get a higher ADR.
Thank you, Mr. Su.
So you're asking, how can you attract like a more wealthier customer?
You got it. I should've said that, huh?
No. I mean, I feel like that's hard. I feel like it wouldn't be economically viable. I'm thinking like luxury, like you want a five-star hotel. Like, I had a guest that, you know, she booked like five nights here. And then first night, it was one of our most expensive rooms. And then she checked in. Right away, after checking in, she called, and she's like, "Hey, you know, I was wondering if I could just get a refund for today." Or... she wanted to cancel because she didn't like the color of the towels and just like the whole decor of the room. And I was like, you know, I've never had a guest complain about the decor of our rooms. I feel like our rooms are pretty nice. And then, like she... I guess she's like one of those wealthier customers. And so I guess her taste, like the impression I got was she wanted like a five-star hotel, you know, something with like a concierge, like a restaurant. These are all things that I don't think are gonna be possible to pull off. Like, I just don't think it would be economically viable to target that consumer.
Great, thank you. That ends the questions. And we are voting on the left-hand side, one of the two for... to fill a four-year term ending 1/31/23.
Could I ask one additional question?
Follow-up question, absolutely.
Yeah, just of Mr. Su, because I read your application letter, and it made it sound like you might not stay here. And I'm just wondering what your future plans are? Do you really intend to stay in town and work on the business and be a part of this board?
Sure, yeah. I'm sorry about that. I was kind of... it was very last second, and so I didn't really understand. I didn't know this was gonna be like this. I had no idea what this really was. But I'm really glad I did it. I feel like it was a great experience. But to answer your question, I think, you know, I do... I don't see myself staying for years. I do see myself maybe, yeah, like pursuing... I want to become like a financial analyst, you know? And so I think, short-term, I do see myself here six months to a year at least. And I think, you know, I'm gonna be able to learn a lot. I'm gonna be able to teach my mom a lot. And I think in the event that I do move, I really do think she should get involved. And I do think, you know, me, you know, trying it out first and like, I guess, going, like telling her... I'll be able to show her the benefits, the pros and the cons. And I think she'll become... like she'll join and contribute. And so I think, yeah, I don't see myself staying here long-term, but I do think it would be beneficial for my mom and I, and I think for Moro Bay. Because I think my mom definitely is gonna be here for like the next 10 years. She sees herself as a hotel owner. So I think, yeah, even if I don't stay, I think her learning, you know, from the experience I could gain from this in six months would be beneficial to everyone.
Thank you for being honest. Appreciate that very much. Okay, so again, voting for one for to fill a four-year term ending 1/31/23, and one to fill current vacancy with term ending 1/31/21.
Okay, I'll start with the four-year term. Mr. Patel received votes from all five council members to fill the four-year seat. The current vacancy, Mr. Su received votes from Councilmember Addis, Councilmember Davis, and Councilmember Heller. Councilmember McPherson and Mayor Heading declined to vote on that seat. But you received three votes, so you would be appointed to fill the current vacancy for a term ending January of 2021.
Thank you both. Appreciate you being here and look forward to working with you in the future on the T-Bid.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for the long-term meeting. We do appreciate it. That ends our meeting. And with that, we will adjourn the special session in the community center. Thank you, folks, for being here. Thank you, council.